All right, good morning. I will call the board to the regular scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, and ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you again, good morning. Board, a couple moves I'd like to make on the agenda with your approval, and that is to pull all our public hearing items up ahead of our report from the ABC. We have multiple people on multiple issues, and let them get on with their day. And then the other thing, as has been our practice with our system for appointing boards and commissions, as soon as we have Mr. Youngberg get here, we'll try to work him into the agenda as quickly as possible since he's not sitting. So, if you guys are okay with that...
Yeah, we'll go on.
Okay?
No problem.
We'll pull public hearing items up after the proclamation for National Voter Registration Month, which we're going to get to here in just a minute. But first, as always, is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda, not on today's agenda. Only thing I would ask is if you're here for a specific public hearing item, let's wait and have you address it at the time we get to that. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak anything, now's your opportunity. Come right on up. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to proclamation of September 2017 as National Voter Registration Month, and specifically, September 26, 2017, as National Voter Registration Day. Lucy Martin, is Lucy... Yep. Lucy, you want to read this in, or you want me to read it in?
You can read it in.
All right. National Voter Registration Month, official proclamation, whereas, registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day, and, whereas, while Iowa is one of the nation's leaders in voter registration and voter participation, with more than 2 million residents currently registered to vote, some eligible citizens have not yet registered, and, whereas, the voter registration process in Iowa is readily available, with applications available through government agencies across the state, and, whereas, the state of Iowa has an online voter registration system, enabling citizens with an Iowa driver's license or non-operator identification cards to register to vote and update their registration status quickly and easily, any time of day, and, whereas, the need for public information and education regarding voter registration is crucial as Iowa voters prepare to take part in the 2017 city elections, and, whereas, we encourage all interested citizens and all appropriate... Did I go over time?
[laughing]
And all appropriate media outlets and civic organizations to participate in this nonpartisan voter registration awareness campaign to encourage the maximum participation of qualified voters in Iowa. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Story County, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as National Voter Registration Month, and September 26, 2017, as National Voter Registration Day. Lucy?
Just some follow-up comments. Thank you. Every day is National Voter Registration Day in the auditor's office, of course. But some people know that Friday, October 27th, at 5:00 PM is the deadline to be registered for the city election, if you live in any city in Iowa or in Story County. And that also, even if you update your registration through the online system, those dates still apply. Also, I'd like to recognize that the League of Women Voters for Ames, Story County, is here, and they are also on Tuesday, next Tuesday, September 26th, they will be at the Ames Public Library at Hybe East from 10:00 to 3:00 to participate in National Voter Registration Day in registering people. Forms are available on our website, in our office, and also driver's license, so please, if you ever move or change your address, please update your voter registration at the same time.
Thanks, Lucy.
That's right.
It's important and it matters. Hope everybody here is a regular voter. If you're not, you should be. Anything to add, Board? Or if not, I would take a motion. Go ahead, Lawrence.
I would so move that we accept the proclamation as read. Thank you.
We have motion and second. Further discussion. Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. September 2017 is National Voter Registration Month in Story County, and September 26, 2017 is National Voter Registration Day, so be sure that you enjoy yourselves on that festive day. Now, we're moving to public hearing items, and our first public hearing item is consideration of Resolution 1832, which is approving a loan agreement of $1.5 million of urban renewal tax increment revenue bond, and pledging payment of the bonds from the valuation, basically at our Wind Towers but a few other places here in Story County. Leanne Hart.
Good morning.
Morning, Leanne.
I have a backup crew in the room that if I question, I will lean on heavily. This is follow-up to the action of the board from a couple weeks ago. I just have a repeat essentially of the slideshow I did show then, but for the benefit of the board and those present today, I'd like to repeat it. This is related to Phase Two of the Tedesco Environmental Learning Quarter Construction, which is the conservation piece as part of the Iowa State University Research Park. Amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan for that specific project were processed from late May through ultimately adoption in July of this year. And then the financing piece followed that, and the board did indeed instruct staff proceed with a tax increment revenue loan agreement. That is a mouthful. And early August, the treasurer in a tweet put this out for bids to lending institutions from the 24th of August through September 5th. Those were then presented to the board and received by the board, and then we get, on September 5th, we received two, Exchange State Bank from Ames at 2.65 percent annually, and then Great Western Bank, again in Ames, 3.18 percent annually. It is a 10-year schedule, and so the resolution that's drafted before you has blanks for you to have the discussion today with which of the two institutions you intend to go, and then staff will amend the resolution accordingly and go forward. With that, that is your action today. Do I need to add anything else from the assistance in the audience? Are there any questions?
Questions for Leanne?
None.
Then we'll open it up and open up the public hearing portion of this item, and ask if there's anyone who would like to address Resolution 1832. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we will close the public hearing, turn to the board for action.
I would move that we go with Exchange State Bank for the 2.65 percent per annum rate.
And approval of resolution.
And approval of resolution.
1832.
Thank you, 1832. It's a group effort sometimes.
I would second that. We have motion and a second. Further discussion. Olson.
Aye.
Chief. Sanders, aye. Exchange State Bank is the approved vendor, and Resolution 1832 passes. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Leanne.
Next public hearing item is First Consideration of Ordinance 263, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map in Story County, and for Resolution 1835, the proposed Dayton Park major subdivision preliminary plat. This is the Givens rezoning. Emily and Jared, good morning.
This is a request for both a rezoning and a major subdivision preliminary plat. The applicant is Jeff Givens of 2272 Dayton Parkway, northeast of Ames. The property is located in Section 24 Franklin Township, and located, again, just northeast of Ames. So the nature of the request is a rezoning from the A1 Agricultural District to the R1 Transitional Residential District. They're also requesting a major preliminary subdivision plat to divide the existing about 11, 10 to 11 acre parcel into four lots, and those range from 1.04 acres to 6.8 acres for three additional single-family dwellings. All lots in this proposed subdivision would take access off of a proposed private street that would be located approximately 30 feet south of Dayton Parkway, which is a private driveway off of Dayton Avenue. 300, sorry, yes. The street is located approximately 300 feet south of Dayton Parkway, which is a private driveway. Okay. So here we are on the very eastern edge of Franklin Township, about just under two miles northeast of the city of Ames, and three miles southeast of the city of Gilbert. The zoning of this property is A1. There is some AR zoning to the north of the property. Three parcels to the west, these two R1 parcels, as well as parcel C, were rezoned from A1 to R1 in 1976. The parcel C, on the very western edge there, was rezoned back to A1 in 1994 to accommodate This is the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, the land use framework map designations. This property is located within the Rural Service and Agricultural Conservation area. It is designated specifically rural residential and natural area. There is agriculture and subsurface mining to the south, and then agriculture and farm service as well to the south. A couple key policies from the rural residential designation of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. This designation includes all single-family residential land uses and developments that involve a maximum average net density of one unit per acre. This designation encourages clustering of residential sites to limit the short and long-term costs associated with infrastructure improvements. And also, this designation looks to limit the rural residential development on prime agricultural land. So the utility providers and related service providers of this property are Alliant Energy, Xenia Rural Water, the Gilbert Fire Department, and then Mary Greeley Ambulance. We have received letters from Alliant, Xenia, and Gilbert Fire, letting us know that they are able and willing to serve this development. So looking at the surrounding land use, the subject property in this image is to the south here. We can see the many additions of country estate subdivisions to the north, and then also the Tulamore Glen subdivision, approximately half mile northeast of the subject property. The, let's see, zooming in just a little bit, again, country estates to the north, and then we also have to the northeast Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park, which has approximately 35 homes located there. Within a quarter mile of the subject property, there are 21 single-family dwellings. Looking at, here we're looking at Dayton Avenue here, 190th here, and then Dayton Parkway, which extends west from Dayton Avenue. There are five single-family dwellings that have access off of Dayton Parkway. Again, that's a private driveway. You can see kind of the progression of building. 1976, the property to the north was, the single-family dwelling to the north was built. The subject property, the single-family dwelling on the subject property was built in 1978, and development moved westward from there. So a little bit of background on the subject property. This was historically an outdoor recreation area called Dayton Park. This was established in 1916 for boating, bathing cabins, dance hall, and so on, other amenities. The last use of this property was around 1950. The property owner has found many artifacts from this time period, including the existing remains of a 100 by 40-foot swimming pool. Again, the existing dwelling on the property was built in 1978.
Word, by the way, it is, I don't know if this is rumored or factual, that the gentleman who played Superman in the TV show in the 50s came and did a diving exhibition at that swimming pool. And the other thing I'll say is the interesting history of Dayton Park, I believe when it talks about the other amenities in addition to boating and the cabins and the dance hall, you will notice that its heyday was during prohibition, and I think that some of our area residents may have been partaking of libations while they were out visiting Dayton like.
I thought it was the ice cream parlor.
It was what they were topping their ice cream with.
So the proposed subdivision would be dividing the existing parcel into four lots, again, for three additional single-family dwellings. Proposed Lot 1 would be 1.5 acres, and that would be to the northeast of the existing single-family dwelling. Proposed Lot 2 would be 1.17 acres, and that would be to the southeast of the existing single-family dwelling. Proposed Lot 3 would be just over an acre and southeast, also southeast of the existing family dwelling. And then proposed Lot 4 would be 6.8 acres and contain the single-family dwelling and the area to the west. We'll look a little bit more closely here. I would just like to point out here that initially, when the applicant came to conceptual review with this proposed subdivision, they were proposing seven single-family lots, all with access off of this private driveway here. That does not conform to our standards. We couldn't, that's not something that could be permitted, so the applicant went back to the drawing board and proposed what you have in front of you today. So here's the existing single-family dwelling, there, and accessory structures. This would be proposed Lot 4, 6.8 acres. Proposed Lot 1, again, to the northeast of the single-family dwelling, Lot 2 here, and then proposed Lot 3. This is the location of the 40 by 100-foot swimming pool, and I do have a picture of the remains of that coming up, but that's the location of the swimming pool. I will point out the private street that's being proposed here, as well as the different shape of proposed Lot 3 was chosen to follow the topography lines of the land. So if you have any, that's the reason for the shape of Lot 3. Here, the applicant has added to the plat potential rain garden locations on each of the proposed lots in green, and then also proposed rock check dams to be located in the existing culvert area. Here's a pictometry image of the site. Most of the development would be taking place here. You can see the remnants of the swimming pool here. Here's some site photos. This is looking west toward the existing dwelling on proposed Lot 4. And this is, again, the existing dwelling and accessory structures. Here's looking south toward proposed Lot 3, just to the southeast there of the single-family dwelling, and looking south toward proposed Lot 2. Here's looking east toward Dayton Avenue along the proposed private street, so the access from Dayton would be located here. This is conservation, the conservation area on the east side of Dayton Avenue directly across from the proposed subdivision. This is looking northeast at proposed Lot 1. Dayton Parkway, the private driveway is located here, and then Dayton Avenue would be here. Here's looking northeast from Dayton Parkway across Dayton Avenue toward 190th Street, also Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park. Again, there are about 35 homes located in that, in that mobile home park. This is looking north along Dayton Avenue from the proposed street, private street, and toward the intersection of 190th Street. This is looking south from the proposed private street along Dayton Avenue. This is looking southwest at the western portion of proposed Lot 4. This area was originally designated as an outlot. We did ask the applicant to combine this with proposed Lot 4, and that was done for us. This is looking southwest at the western portion of Lot 4. The applicant did provide us, following the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on September 6th, some updated site photos of some cleanup work he did in this area, so those will be following here. This is an image submitted by the applicant on September 11th of this year, showing the cleanup of the area on proposed Lot 4. This is looking southwest from Dayton Parkway at a portion of the western area on proposed Lot 4. Again, the applicant provided us with a photo, a cleaned up, a site photo of the cleaned up area on September 11th. This is looking south on Lot 4 toward the natural area located down by the stream there. Again, the natural area to the south. This is looking northwest to the property on the north side of Dayton Parkway, and then looking northeast to the property on, to another property on the north side of Dayton And then this is looking east along Dayton Parkway toward Dayton Avenue, which would be located right here. It's hard to see. This is the accessory structure on the subject property, and then the property to the north So, looking at the standards for approval for rezonings, the proposed rezoning shall conform to the Story County Development Plan, which is our C2C plan, and that references the Ames Urban Fringe Plan for the two-mile buffer around the city of Ames. A couple policies for this area, again, single-family residential uses, clustering of residential sites, and then limiting development on prime agricultural land. The second standard is that the rezoning shall conform to the statement of intent for the proposed district. The proposed lots meet all of the bulk requirements of the R1 Transitional Residential District, and we believe it's consistent with nearby residential lots. The third standard is that the rezoning should be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. This property is immediately adjacent to property zone R1 Transitional Residential District to the west. Country Estate Subdivision, which is zone AR, is located to the north, and then the Tulamore, Tulamore Glen subdivision, which is zone R1, is about a half mile to the northeast of the subject property. Also, again, located to the northeast across that intersection is Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park. The fourth standard is that to protect environmental resources, the natural area designation of this property is really located on the southern, one-third of the subject property. The development will be discouraged in this area, but there appears to be plenty of space outside of the designated natural area to construct single-family dwellings on each lot, or one single-family dwelling on each lot. Lot 3 may be the exception to this rule, however, there is that existing abandoned swimming pool structure, which is due to the configuration of the lot probably, most likely where the house would be built anyway. This is the abandoned swimming pool structure. This photo was provided to us by the applicant. The fifth standard of approval for rezoning is that when you're rezoning from the A1 or A2 districts, the land evaluation site assessment, or LISA score, must be less than 267. The LISA score calculated for this property is below that threshold at 177, and therefore meets this requirement for rezoning. Looking at the subdivision regulations, subdivisions that can't be submitted as an agricultural or minor subdivision plat shall be considered a major plat. This subdivision, although it only has four proposed lots, is proposing a private road and therefore must be submitted as a major subdivision. Again, this needs to adhere to all of our ordinances, and we, the major subdivision plats do go through the preliminary plat review, so that's what you're looking at today. If it is approved and improvements are made to this, and all improvements are made to the site, the applicant will come back at that point for your review of the final plat. We did get some information about the traffic and accident counts for this intersection. This was a topic of concern brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. As you can see, starting in 1999, actually, the traffic count, the average annual daily traffic counts on Dayton Avenue have actually decreased a little bit. They increased in 2007, and then have dropped back down. Along 190th Street, which connects to I-35, the, these average, average, I'm sorry, annual average daily traffic counts have increased over the past several years. We did request accident information from the sheriff's office for the past three years, and the state is for at or near the intersection of Dayton Avenue or 190th Street. There were a total of five accidents reported in the last three years, so since 2014, four of which did not involve an injury and one that did. So some comments from the interagency review team, because this subdivision has more lots, environmental health noted that they will need to hire a soils professional, which is standard with our major subdivisions. A permit from the engineer's office will be required to build the new street, but the location was approved by the Story County engineer. The assessor's office had comments about assessment. I won't go into that. We can talk about that if you have specific questions. Planning and development, we asked that outlot act be combined with Lot 4. That's what they chose to do. They chose to go ahead and do that. Our land development regulations permit some maximum removal of 15% of natural vegetative cover. There were concerns from the public about trees being removed from this property, but the applicant has indicated that he has planted over 70 trees on the property prior to the submittal of the subdivision plat. We asked for Iowa stormwater management, best management practices, and erosion control, sediment control practices, statements on those. The engineer has added notes to the plat, as well as those locations of possible rain gardens, and the proposed check dams onto the plat. We did receive some calls, a call with questions about junk in the, in the western portion of proposed Lot 4, and a comment about a possible sawmill business in the back there. The applicant met with planning staff following that phone call, and discussed how an arborist had provided information and recommendation on proper protection of the oaks and larger trees on the properties. This did result in removing some of the tree species that, and other dead trees, but the applicant did, again, plant 70 trees on the property. The applicant also indicated he was not running a sawmill business. This is a hobby for him, and he did, however, submit a home occupation permit for the financial planning business that he currently runs out of one of the accessory structures on this property. This was approved by the Planning and Development Department. Um, this, uh, was approved by the Planning and Development Department. Uh, comments from the public, notice letters were sent to property owners, um, within a quarter mile of the proposed subdivision, uh, prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Um, we also public, published a notice of public hearing in the county's designated newspapers on August 31st, prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Um, materials were routed to the city of Ames and Gilbert. Uh, the city of Ames and Gilbert didn't express any concerns, although, um, Ames' planning staff did, um, inquire about the preservation of the natural area. Um, planning and development staff did receive several phone calls with general inquiry queries, um, about the proposed development, um, as well as four emails, uh, with concerns regarding the proposals. These were forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Um, several members of the public spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Issues included, uh, removal of trees, um, noise from the sawmill, um, other equipment located on the property, truck traffic on the private driveway, uh, storage of materials, um, and then concerns regarding the, um, the proposed subdivision not being compatible with the neighborhood, um, and the addition of the road near to the, to the private driveway. Um, again, we sent notice letters, again, prior to this meeting, um, and we also published, um, a notice of public hearing in the county's designated newspapers on September 14th. So, um, Story County Planning and Development staff support the proposed rezoning from the A1 District to the R1 Transitional Residential District based on the following. Uh, the subject property is immediately adjacent to two parcels with single-family dwellings that are Zoned R1, located directly to the west. Uh, the R1 Transitional Residential District conforms to the Ames Urban Fringe Rural Residential Designation. The proposed use conforms to the statement of intent and the regulations of the R1 Transitional Residential District, and the proposed use will conform to surrounding land use and development patterns. In terms of the subdivision, uh, planning and development staff also recommend approval of, um, the proposed Dayton Park subdivision, uh, preliminary plat. Um, this will create four lots for three additional single-family dwellings, all to be located to the east of the existing single-family dwelling. Uh, the proposed subdivision meets, uh, Story County land reg, uh, Story County Land Development requirements for major subdivision plats. The natural area, uh, to the south and west portions of the property will be preserved. Um, all lots will have frontage on the proposed private road, and the current, uh, driveway access off of Dayton Parkway, um, to the existing single-family dwelling will be removed. Um, and again, all proposed lots will take access off the proposed, uh, private dr, road. Uh, at their September 6th, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, uh, to the Board of Supervisors, um, the, their recommendation was a split vote, 3-3, uh, on the motion to approve the rezoning request, um, and a recommend, uh, recommendation of denial, um, with a vote of 5 to 1 for the proposed major subdivision preliminary plat. Uh, the reasons stated for the motion to deny the subdivision, um, were that although the rezoning request was appropriate for the proposed plat, um, this proposal was not consistent with the type of uses currently in the area. Um, also, um, there were questions regarding what has happened on the subject property prior to the submittal of the plat. So those were the reasons, um, stated for, for recommendation of denial for the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the applicant, um, since the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on the 6th, the applicant has made efforts to clean up the western portion of his property. Um, the applicant has provided photos, which we looked at previously, of the recently cleaned up area to Planning and Development Staff. Um, this cleanup included the removal of the pergola, the sawmill, um, and the wood, wood kiln, as well as the relocation of the telephone poles. So, uh, we do need two separate motions from you today, one on the rezoning request, um, and then one on the subdivision request. So I have both of those here. Any questions before we look at those specifically?
Absolutely. First of all, really good job, really thorough, appreciate the work you, you put in. Um, so, so a couple of questions that I have of you guys, and then I think I'm gonna have the same questions of the applicant or the applicant's representative. So just help me, since we, since we have what appears to be a disagreement between staff and, and Planning and Zoning Commission, talk to me about the factors used in determining whether this is a consistent use, how we determine, you, you mentioned earlier that, you know, we want an average, um, lot size of more than an acre or more. Uh, how, how is that determined? How is this, from your perspective, a consistent use?
Everything really starts with a comprehensive plan, C2C plan. The C2C plan references the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, so that's really our guiding, uh, document for trying to figure out if this proposed use fits in, um, with the area. And again, the rural residential designation indicates that it permits a maximum average net density of one unit per acre. It's a 10-acre parcel. Typically, he could be permitted more than the number of lots that he's requesting, but when you take into account the road and the preservation of the natural resource areas, it's gonna be less than the, the one acre, one unit per acre. Um, so that's what everything starts with, and then we have zoning ordinance requirements. Um, and we are to look at the surrounding land uses. It doesn't say adjacent land uses. Uh, just along Dayton Parkway, you've got a mix of existing lots ranging from 1.7 acres up to 12 acres. Um, if you look to the north in the Country Estate subdivision, on the southern end, you've got lots that are around an acre and a half. They increase in size. To the northeast of this, you have Hickory Grove Mobile Home Park, which has 30-some uh, mobile home units on 10 acres. So you, we're taking that into consideration. And then further to the north, approximately, um, a half-mile, the Tulamore Glenn subdivision, that's Zoned R1, which is what they're requesting, those are half-acre lots. And then the development to the east of that on the east side of the road are, are half-acre lots. So we take all that into consideration when we're, uh, making recommendations.
Okay. So, so for me, that takes care of the, uh, why staff deems this a consistent, appropriate use, and maybe planning and zoning, I think in a split vote, didn't necessarily see it that way. The second portion, or the second concern that I saw there, Jerry, was things that had happened before this request was made on the property, and I think more specifically on the western part of the property, and what was gonna happen with the western part of the property. Talk me through all that. So, so what we've got here is, Emily, I think you said the original request was seven lots, which would have included buildable lots on the western part of this property, and I think you guys at that point recommended, no, that's not something that, that is really passable. Uh, so what's wrong with the western end? There's an easement, as I read this, along the existing Dayton, Dayton Parkway, which impacts the western end. So things can't be built back there under our current regulations, as I understand it. Verify that for me. Talk to me about the kind of things that happened back there prior to this request, and what, if any, impact that has on this request.
Right. Um, there were a lot of comments from the neighbors and questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission with, with regard to cutting of trees. Um, information that we received from the applicant is that he was removing some of the trees that had fallen over or that were dead, or that were dying. Um, but also, as Emily mentioned, he had hired an arborist because, um, he wanted advice on how to protect certain species, the taller, the stronger trees, the oaks, and similar species, and upon the advice of the arborist, it was suggested that he remove trees that were in close proximity, otherwise they would be competing. So there was some of that going on.
Can I stop you on that? We asked a follow-up question. Is, was it illegal for him to remove dead trees on his property?
Our, uh, zoning ordinances in the land development regulations, for the most part, I believe are set up for development applications regarding zoning permits, conditional use permits, subdivision, uh, ordinance, subdivision, uh, platting standards. And when an application is submitted for one or a combination of those, then we are able to look at standards which include the environmental provisions about, uh, protection of, of trees and whatnot. So this activity took place prior to any submittal.
Let me re-ask. His property is Zoned A1 would ordinarily, ordinarily allow a farmer, an A1 person, to cut down trees, correct?
Sorry. I, I would say that's a non-regulated activity. Until such time a development application is submitted, then we need to look at that.
All right. Thank you.
But with regard to Dayton Parkway, our view of that is that it's, it's a driveway. Um, it was, uh, created, I believe in the seventies, late seventies. It's a 60-foot, uh, right-of-way, extending from Dayton Avenue all the way back to the west, west of Mr. Gibbons's property, you know, as to allow access to that western portion. Um, but again, this is a four-lot subdivision request. Uh, Mr. Gibbons's, uh, parcel is six and a half acres. He cannot resubmit a, a plat to divide that further under our current standards because he would have to have access to a public or a private road, right-of-way.
Okay. Um, all right. So that's it for the questions that I had based on where I saw the, the disconnect between our Planning and Zoning Commission and, and Planning and Development Staff. A couple of the other questions that either I have or I've, I've heard asked, and Emily, I think you mentioned this in part of your presentation, the hammerhead, um, of, of the end of this new access street. Why is that not a circle? Is that topography? Is that strictly the applicant's decision? How, how does all that work? And what does a hammerhead road designate that, that around about circle would?
On a major plat, they really have the option. They can do, they can submit an app, uh, a drawing that shows a hammerhead so that you can provide access to the lots, which is what's shown here, and it provides a way to turn around, and that way you're facing the road when you, um, exit onto Dayton. Or you can submit something that shows more of a cul-de-sac. So they chose to do a hammerhead.
But you wouldn't build a hammerhead thinking that maybe you're gonna extend that road in the future? I mean, is that, is that thing, or is, once this road's in, it is what it is?
Well, with this site in particular, with the topography, it would be very difficult to extend, um, on the south end, um, westerly, and then on the north end, he's got a couple of buildings on the north end with that would make it difficult.
But you've got the hardware right there.
Right. I'm talking about the north, north-south portion of that. To extend that north tip westerly would be pretty difficult with the configuration of the existing accessory buildings.
Okay. Uh, so we talked a lot about natural areas. I think you talked about that existing swimming pool, which, which spills over into part of a natural area, but it looks to me like the lot that's being proposed on the northeast side, I think it's Lot 1, that's, that seems to be in Prairie, and I think there's some tax implications there. Why is that not considered a, a natural area as for arborists?
Yeah, it's not referenced on the Ames Urban Fringe Plan as a natural resource area. Our understanding is that a previous landowner prior to Mr. Gibbons acquiring that property planted that material and has, uh, and received a tax benefit, as is, uh, Mr. Gibbons. Um, but it's not, uh, considered to be a regulated, uh, resource. So if that lot is, you know, if this plat is approved, then the lot is sold, and the owner, uh, could preserve a portion of it or remove all of it.
Okay.
You just lose this tax, that, that portion of it.
Okay. That's all the questions I had for staff. And so, so my intent here is for us to finish asking questions to staff, for us to bring up the applicant, hear from the applicant, ask questions of the applicant, then open the public hearing. Do you guys have any questions for Gary or Emily?
I ask your partner to look into the, uh, traffic counts, and thank you for doing that. Do those numbers, as you saw in that three-year period, give you any concern, or what do they say to you?
There's, uh, on both roads, there's over 2,300 vehicles. Five accidents over a three-year period isn't too alarming, I would say. It's certainly less than 1% of the total number of traffic, and as Emily mentioned, only one of those involved, um, an injury.
All right. And Boris?
Um, as I come back to these, uh, what has happened on the property prior to, okay, under the A1 and even into now the new R1 designation, where someone stores their lumber or if they keep, um, repurposed or reclaimed items, what are regulations about that? Do we require them to be kept in a particular appearance and, um, or?
Like a log pile? Like a wood? We don't have a specific regulation that addresses that.
Okay. So.
Other than the aesthetics, we have nothing to address this with.
Right. So, and we don't, we don't regulate aesthetics under either one of these designations, correct?
Not with regard to sacking or storing logs.
Okay.
To use for fuel.
Or reclamation of materials that are kept on a property?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all you have?
That's it.
Okay. Anything else, Barb? Good. All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, Gibbons and/or representative, question for you guys. Hey, please come right up here, so that you can go in there. Absolutely. Not that one. Not that one. That one. They'll slide out of the way for you. Start by introducing yourself, please.
My name's Jeff Gibbons. Uh, I'm the applicant, lifelong resident of Story County.
And I'm Bob Gibson. You just switched a few letters around in the last name.
And Bob, that square microphone right in front of you, sure, if you go up, you can speak right that way. Thank you guys for being here today. Feels to me like the board has gotten a really thorough, uh, presentation of, of all the gyrations, uh, that we've been through to this point. First thing I'd ask you, is there anything you wanna add or note, uh, from the presentation or something that you feel like wasn't addressed during the presentation?
Well, in, in regards to the, the tree removal, uh, when I bought, I bought the property on contract four years ago, and the, the previous owner showed me pictures of Dayton Lake, and I, I, I fell in love with the property. My intentions were to, to, uh, resurrect Dayton Lake. Talked to the owners, landowners on, on the south side, they, they, because eventually that water would end up on their property, they, they expressed no interest in doing that. So, um, but there's enough slope there that there's still a prop, um, possibility of a water feature. So I talked to the Natural Resources Office, and Tara Van Woss came out and looked at the property. She referred me to John Garten of the DNR. And, and they said, as long as, as long as you're only building it this big, and it's 18, 18-acre foot, um, 18.
Storage.
And storage, you don't need a permit. And so in my mind, I'm, I'm saying, I can, I can still build a water feature. So if you look at this, what I've taken out, I took out the trees where the water was going to be. I hauled those trees up just because I wanted to reclaim those resources, and it's part of the reason why I have a sawmill. And so, uh, if you look at, uh, what's happening, for example, this whole area used to be what's called oak savanna. And oak savanna is, we wanna preserve the oaks and basically grasses underneath. We were gonna get rid of the honeysuckle, mulberry, and all those invasive trees. And so, uh, that's, what I'm doing is very similar to the restoration project that's happening on Ada Hayden, one of the crown jewels of, of the property. So, um, I, I'm not taking out, so to answer that question, I was, I felt like I was in, within my rights to build a water feature, took out the trees where the water feature was going to be. And I haven't finished that because I just, um, if you look at this project, every tree, every log, every branch, I've touched. It's not like I ordered some contractor out there, this has been a work in progress. So, and I, and I love doing it. But that's, uh, to answer the question in, or one of the objections about the trees, it was because I wanted to put back some sort of water feature down below. And as I read the, uh, read the, uh, explanation, there, there is no permitting as it stands today. So I, I guess if I wanna build a water feature, I'm not exactly who I should be talking to because I talked to the DNR and.
You brought an arborist, then what did he tell you? As far as the tree removal? Did he say, it sounds like you're telling this narrative, what did he tell you expressly?
Well, when I brought the arborist in there, because what I wanted to do was recreate the oak savanna, so he advised me to take out, uh, the underbrush. The oaks are gonna be there for 150 years. The other trees are gonna grow up, evasive, they're competing for the nutrients, and they're gonna, they're not. and they're going to, they're not, they're not long-term trees.
Okay. Okay, questions for Mr. Gibbons or Bob?
Well, I think that from the submissions of the application, the iterations that you see coming from Planning and Zoning, the follow-ups, and I think, once again, Jerry and Emily did it pretty good.
Good.
And will-
I have one question. So the name, that as I understand it right now, we're talking about Dayton Park Circle on this proposed access road, and there's, at least I, you know, we've got Dayton Road, you've got Dayton Parkway. I've heard a couple of concerns that maybe that's going to create confusion with addressing out there. Talk to me about the name of that road, and maybe Jerry, then you weigh in, do we have any, any say over a name over a road? Dayton Park Circle, I think, is what's proposed, right?
Right. I would like to have Dayton a part of, a part of this road in some fashion, because what I'm trying to do is, is in some way continue the legacy of what AL Dayton started a hundred years ago. In regards to confusing, if the emergency services says, no, that's too confusing, then we'll come up with some other name. But I, it doesn't have to be Dayton Park Circle, but I want it to be Dayton something because that's, that's what it should be.
Go ahead.
I'd like to follow up directly on the naming. Is, once again, I'd like to make sure that I understand this correctly. Dayton Parkway is not a parkway at all, it is a private drive. So are we within our rights to ask that that sign come down to prevent confusion?
That's a question we have to look into.
The legal, okay, because I understand it's on private property.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Lors, I'm going to say this, and this is not specifically about Dayton Parkway, but there, I made a request of Jerry and Darren Moon, our county engineer, to start to dig into all of our regulations on these private roads. This is not the only road, the only private drive that we have in the county with this issue. We need more clarity there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you on that.
I just want to say, for the record, I was invited out and went out to view the property physically. So some of the reasons, I guess, I'm not asking a lot of questions today is having already received them from Mr. Gibbons, and I believe maybe you two were there out there at some point or whatever. But so just, so some of it, as our background has been explained to me. So I apologize if I'm not asking the right questions for the record, for clarity, I guess, because some of them I've already heard.
Absolutely, and Lors, I really appreciate that, and as you know, we've all been out, been out multiple occasions to meet with Mr. Gibbons. I went out and met with neighbors that we're going to hear from here in a few minutes, just to visit about their concerns. And all I would say is this, and I don't want to belabor this, but it is important to ask the questions. Even if you have the answers, it's important to ask the questions and make sure that we're, this is kind of a unique situation where you have Planning and Zoning Commission going one way, which is diametrically opposed to where staff was, and it's our job to get to the bottom of it and figure out what's appropriate moving forward. So if you don't have any other questions of them, I'll let them go and we'll open the public hearing.
I don't.
Okay.
Can I add a few more thoughts here? Just a couple things. Dayton Parkway, the existing private drive, a couple things about that, with this new arrangement, there's going to be one less house using that. It'll be Jeff's house, because he's going to access it now from the new street, so there's actually going to be less traffic, one house worth, on that, on that Parkway. Regarding traffic, typically what's figured in for single-family residents, I think, is about ten vehicle trips per day. Darren, that's about right. So this development would potentially add thirty vehicle trips per day onto Dayton Avenue, which is only a just over one percent increase, but really only puts it back to, I think, that was it nineteen ninety-nine figure. So it's negligible impact traffic-wise as well. All the new homes are obviously to the east, along Dayton. From the Kellys to the south, it's four hundred feet minimum from wherever a house would be built to their house, and that's all trees in between. And it's pretty much the same for the Dawls to the west. It's at least four hundred feet from where that house would be built and, and a lot of trees. So my point there is that it's not going to be affecting their privacy at all. There's no effect on any of their woodlands or anything whatsoever. There's going to be very little effect on the woodlands on Jeff's property. You know, a tree or two might have to go to fit in a house. Regarding that area around the pool, which, that pool does clip that designated natural area, which is a broad stroke painting on a large-scale map, but whether a house gets built in that footprint or not, that area's going to get cleaned up, and there's going to be vegetation removed, is that pool and all that concrete's removed and regraded, and so on. And there's a very common concern with every development about how is drainage affected and where water goes. All of Jeff's property drains down to that, that area, and where these new houses are going to go, they're going to drain directly into that pond if it gets built, and not affect any properties at all downstream. And overall, just some rough estimates, with these three new houses, there's going to be maybe like a six percent increase in impervious coverage, and yet, but that's why we're providing the check dams down that swale and then the rain gardens to help slow and capture some of that rainwater. So those are my additions.
Can you remind me, Mr. Gibson, what your role is in this?
Oh, I'm with Civil Design Advantage, the engineering firm.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Alright, so with that, we will now open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would like to address the board supervisors on this matter. This is ordinance two sixty-three and resolution eighteen thirty-five. And pretty informal, just calling up, you're going to start by introducing yourself and give your address, and then share your comments.
Good morning. And I won't say anymore about that because I know you have no regulations concerning that. I think it's part of the communication lack that this has further enhanced the distrust in, between what he was doing and what we thought he was doing. Having said that, I think there's a couple about, things about this, that his proposal in terms of these standards for approval, two main things. I would like to point out some things that I believe would say that this does not meet the standards for approval. One of which has to do with being compatible with surrounding land uses and patterns, development patterns. These are one-acre lots or slightly more or less, those that he's proposing to either have homes on or that already have a home. Now, the one back lot apparently can't be built on, and it is the largest piece of this property that will be remained. Excuse me, I have allergies, and it's not real good for me right now. So within his lots range from just one-point-one acre to one-point-seven where the existing home is. And the average lot size in the, for the homes and properties immediately surrounding him, there's about ten of them, ten properties or homes, the average size is ten-point-five acres. Then if you go out to the next quarter-mile increment diameter's area, the average lot size is eight-point-three, oh-three acres. And, no, excuse me, that's incorrect. That's four, it's six-point-two-eight acres is the average size in the quarter-mile area.
Not including, not including Hickory Grove?
Well, Hickory Grove, by the way, is one single lot.
Right, but there's thirty-five units there.
That's ten-point-six-seven acres. And I would argue that, that thing is a non-conformity, it would never be approved today, and shouldn't be used as a standard how we approve future development in that area. To me, it's, we ought to be discussing what we can do to maybe improve that situation, rather than how do we use that as a guideline for future planning. So anyway, so my, my statement on this is that the pattern of development is not for urban-type concentrated lots, it's for more rural, open development with larger lot sizes. These sorts of things are commonly regulated in urban and other rural settings about minimum lot sizes because they do impact property values of adjacent properties, and has a potential detrimental impact on them. In fact, one of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and others may have chimed in, is that, why, why should we approve a development that just meets the most minimal standards? And this was in, in response to this lot size that he heard from, from folks in the audience that day, is basically, they're approving slightly over one-acre lots in an area that was clearly not, the pattern of development was clearly not in that direction. That was my one concern with the applicant not meeting the standards for approval. And the other one has to do with the natural areas. Now, looking at Story County Code eighty-eight oh-five, in paragraph two, protection of natural vegetation cover as defined in section eighty-five oh-eight of the code of Story County. Eighty-five oh-eight, paragraph one-five-six D indicates that woodlands and quote "native prairie areas" are included in, in natural vegetation cover. And the area being developed, that front part, the most eastern part of this, where the lots actually are, is a two-acre area that has, just a second here, I've got a lot of paper here, I've got a, I don't want to get myself confused. There's a process, there was a little bit of discussion about that this was for tax purposes, had been exempt from taxation, and this, this is in accordance with a state law that allows for these areas to be exempted from taxation, as it is for forested areas, etc. But the process to get this exemption is explicitly clear. The DNR has to certify that this property is a natural prairie, open prairie that has not been cultivated. Now, it can be a prairie area that has been improved, but it has to have an underlying standard that it is a natural, previously uncultivated area. And they certify that through a process with the DNR. There's a whole certification process that has to take place, and that, that is step one. Then that's submitted to the county, and then they look at it and see if it's approved. So I, I am arguing that that has been designated, it isn't somebody's subjective opinion that this is a natural prairie area, and it is included in the code as a protected natural area. Therefore, this needs to be taken into consideration in the approval process. And because it is stipulated in the code that natural, native prairie areas are included, and, and then if you were to go back to the fifteen percent destruction of natural prairie, or of natural areas as part of your developmental standards, this is the two-acre area, which is eighty-seven thousand one-hundred-and-twenty square feet. The roadway alone has seventeen thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet in it, which already exceeds the fifteen percent destruction standard. Then if you add on to that three fifteen-hundred-square-foot houses, that's an additional forty-five-hundred, and if you have an attached garage, it's roughly five-hundred-and-fifty square feet, that's another sixteen-hundred square feet. And then if you add just the driveway to get to the garage, I allowed another five-hundred square feet there, you're up to twenty-five thousand square feet of an eighty-seven thousand square-foot area, which far exceeds the fifteen percent standard for destruction of natural areas. And this doesn't even include the site prep and yard areas and everything else that would cut into this two-acre patch of certified native Iowa prairie. And this was, I hadn't looked into these regulations at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I didn't have all this detail at that time. I just knew that that was a natural area that the previous owners had improved, but it had, it's been there forever. So, so in summary, this rezoning and proposed development request should not be approved as it runs contrary to the county planning goals, priorities, and standards in some of the, I forget what they-
The ERs.
Yes, document, as it relates to standards for protecting natural areas, and it, and then it also, because it doesn't conform with that, it doesn't conform with the regulations and standards in the development code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do-
Go ahead, Lors.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
The first one is, anybody chime in, who knows? Was Hickory Grove there, the Hickory Grove mobile home park first, before people began subdividing to build big homes?
Oh, it's-
It's a very long time, right? Okay.
Yeah, it's been, I've seen it.
Thank you. So just want to make sure that it was the housing subdivisions that moved in on Hickory Grove, rather than the other way around. Okay, second of all, question about your certification, the DNR certification that you brought up here. Now, DNR certified to get a tax credit, but did, does anybody know if once that certification is given, that property has to stay, you know, per some kind of law? Or is it just if you choose to take it out of-
I don't believe so. I don't believe it does.
Okay, so-
But I think that, knowing though that that exists the way it is, it might be expeditious to just, but they currently have it on- to just, but they currently have it under, it's currently, it's currently in that designation.
But it can flow in and out though, as opposed to?
No, it can flow in, but it can never, if it, to meet this qualification, it's not like a piece of CRP ground.
Okay.
There's an annual recertification process for this program, so each year the property owner has to apply.
But the certification done by the DNR is a one-time thing.
I'm not sure on that.
It's upfront, before you can even get through the door.
Once it's in, it doesn't automatically need to stay in?
Right. That's my real question. It doesn't have to stay there. I understand it has to be pretty much virgin ground and it's certified.
But remember, it is virgin ground.
Right, yeah.
And we're potentially participating in the destruction of native prairie.
Well, I would say historically, it wasn't, whatever it was, when this facility came out of the ground, it changed. So what it has become is what we see today.
I have aerial photos that go back to the 1920s and it's not, there's no buildings in that area.
Well, I, we had a park that was placed there, we see remnants of it, yeah, about to walk and see it. And I suspect, and then speaking of aerial maps, I did, as through the course of figuring out what we have before us here, had Jerry's department give us some aerial maps in there just to speak of what that neighborhood had become prior to reflecting on the decades past. I don't think there was a home that was constructed out there that did not take out full growth and affect property in the manner that you were speaking to.
The photo that Jeff has too, that shows it in the heyday when it was that park, I think the drive actually went through that area, to actually, you know.
But it is today what it is.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, it has been certified what it is, and that being a, a piece of property that has never been developed or, and has never been used as cropland, it's a pretty rare commodity in our neighborhood. And so, and it is, it is, it is what it is. And granted, you can take it in and out, but I think that the board, the supervisor participating in the, in the wanton destruction of a native area is something that needs to be seriously considered.
And it is, and I appreciate it, and, and while it is really important that it is what it is, it's also important what it's not, and it is not in a designated natural area, protected area. It is not something that legislatively, any governmental entity can say to a property owner, you don't have the right to go mow that down. And so I'm with you, we need to consider it, but we also need to consider what it's not. And really appreciate your comments today. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, my final question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have one more. The 15% of our own regulations that say no more than 15%, the 87,000 square feet you talked about, it was the, and that covered what, the two acres?
The two acre area there, because that's kind of a distinct area.
Uh huh.
And then you've got another six acres of woodlands on that property.
So, I'm going to go really back to the staff, I appreciate you putting this out. How do we calculate our 15%?
Based on entire parcel, the entire 10 acre area.
Okay, thank you very much. I thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Who else?
I'm going to go next because I have some kind of tag on to, to what he said.
True.
I brought handouts.
And it's still morning, Lisa, start by introducing yourself. Don't talk to us till you get over there at the microphone and start by introducing
Hello, I'm Lisa Lorenzen. I live at 2001 Dayton Parkway, just on the north side of this. First of all, again, thank you to Rick for coming out and talking to the neighborhood. I think we all greatly appreciated that. And also my impromptu conversation with Supervisor Chitty, when you?
Yes, it was impromptu.
Went to the wrong house.
Went to the wrong house.
That happens. What I want to start this with is just a reminder that you guys are not required to approve something because it meets minimum standards. Okay? If you were required to approve things that met minimum standards, we wouldn't need you because anything that met minimum standards would just automatically get approved. So, with that in mind, you know, what I want to do and what, what Jerry just tried to do is we want to convince you it doesn't meet minimum standards. However, in case you disagree with this, I just have a few things I want you to consider if you do approve it. And I think Rick has pretty much mentioned these. There's an easement on the northeast side, northeast part of the property that's along the existing Dayton Parkway, and I would ask you to consider not approving that as it really isn't relevant to the current rezoning and subdivision. The second thing is that whole Dayton, the name Dayton Park Circle, and Jeff, I get why you want to name it that, and I fully appreciate that, but there, there already is confusion with Dayton Parkway. In fact, your own county staff did not get the first notice to our house correctly because they put Dayton Avenue, not Dayton Parkway. So we've already got Dayton Avenue, Dayton Parkway, we add Dayton Circle, or Dayton Park Circle or whatever, there's, there's too many Datens there already. So one way or another, that will cause confusion, that will cause, we have a lot of turnaround traffic in our area because people go down that thinking it's the wrong road. So, just consider the naming issue, I don't know if you have any, any influence on that or not. And of course, as we've mentioned, we would all prefer a cul-de-sac versus a hammerhead, even though legally there's no difference, it would give the neighbors comfort that maybe we don't have to spend the next 10 years continuing to come to these meetings as, in opposition of continued development. So consider that if you decide to approve it, please. The minimum standards, I want to bring up four things there why we think it doesn't meet minimum standards, and I think Jerry did a good job on some of the, on mentioning these. My first point is we keep bringing up that the swimming pool abuts into that natural area. So on my second page, what I did is I just kind of drew a red line that shows the hatch area is the natural area, and I drew the, the red line, and everybody says, well, we'll make an exception for that. So already you're saying it doesn't meet minimum standards, but you'll make an exception for that because the unnatural object is in the natural area. And if you're going to do that, I would say, you know, looking at that hash mark natural area, it, it's a randomly drawn line. The natural area isn't a straight line. And if you're going to adjust for unnatural objects in the natural area, then on the third page, shouldn't you also take into account that the true boundaries of the natural area? And the one I drew was kind of random, I didn't realize that the lot lines followed the contours, so you can see mine's not perfect either. I think you could draw 37 different versions of this on there, but any way you would redraw those natural boundaries, they would actually intrude more into that lot that has the swimming pool as opposed to intruding less into that lot. And that's really the, the lot that has, you know, brought the, the most questions as to whether it meets the minimum standards. So, you know, please consider that when you think about the natural area. If you're going to make an exception in one direction, think about making that exception in the other direction, that only seems reasonable.
Right. Okay, can I go there?
Yeah.
And, and so, I think what you're calling a, a potential exception, I'm not sure we view that the same way, and Jerry had asked you to address this. So, so that is a, is a very generic line, as you said, right? It's a very generic line, and the reality is, our regulations there don't precisely say there will be no activity, it simply says that anything, discouraging, anything you take out, you have to replace. Jerry, you want to address that at all?
Right, I would just add that the lot that has that pool is lot three, and if you're interested, I don't have a crystal ball, but if you're interested in that lot, you're probably going to face your house north and then take advantage of the view for a deck or a patio, so that the, the footprint of that house is, is going to be probably more east-west oriented, and so it's going to likely be out of that natural resource area to take advantage of that.
Thank you. Did mean interrupt, Lisa, I just wanted to?
No, that's fine, and I think our point would be, we, as a, as a neighborhood, I think we collectively think two lots makes sense. I don't, you know, we're here obviously opposing the whole thing, but if you take it steps further, I mean, we would love to convince you no development at all, if we can't convince you that, of that, would you consider two lots instead of three? Then to tag on again to what Jerry brought up with the native prairie, the property card is then attached on the, the fifth page, I'll get back to that fourth one in a second, where there is a forest reserve and the slough bill is the prairie. And then the back page shows all of the years that those forest reserves and the tax benefit has been received. And I can see that those things can be taken in and out, but right now they're in. So right now, the landowner says they're a natural area because he's getting tax benefit from it. And I would just argue that you, you need to let that resolve itself before you can rezone. Let it come, let them not apply next year, take it out of the natural area, and then come back for the rezone. Because I just, the DNR thinks it's a natural area, the landowner thinks it's a natural area, and it just seems strange that Story County can come in and say, well, it's not really a natural area, you can rezone it. So, just something for you to consider there. The picture on page four, the point that goes along with Jerry's again is that, that hatch area that's the mine, where the mine is, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you can't build houses on that, you can't do residential on top of that agricultural mining area. And if that's, if that's true, what that really means is, what you decide for this property is kind of like the last thing for our area. It's not like there's going to be a lot more development there. And so again, when you look at that, Jerry's assessment that two acres is kind of the minimum, maybe one and a half to two, somewhere in there, for this area to come in and say, nope, three one acre, three one acre lots are just fine. That is changing the character of the neighborhood, it's not in keeping with, with even what will happen in the future because you can't build on that area down there, and most of the areas to the north is, is already developed. So, one more thing for you to, to consider. The last thing I want you to consider is, we, you know, the sawmill. My reading of this is a sawmill is a, is a zone agricultural, and the use of the sawmill in producing lumber is actually considered an industrial use, from what I could read in your regulations, which is not allowed in agricultural zone area. And also, the cutting down of trees and creating lumber constitution agricultural use. And if the land is in agricultural use, again, it's not a, you can't rezone forever, but there has to be a time period of when you're not using that. And while the, while Jeff Gibbons has contended that he uses this for hobby purposes, it's our understanding that he has a partner in the sawmill and may, may have bought the sawmill with someone else, but even if he didn't buy it with someone else, he has a partner, Gary Goodman, that uses the sawmill frequently, and Gary has a Goodman Construction Services business. So Gary can't argue that he uses it for hobby purposes, that's his business. So, when you go back to your minimum standards, I, I think any, you know, any one of these things alone is not enough for you to say no, and I get that. Any one of these things are kind of like, mm, you know, but I think when you stack them on top of each other, and you stack the natural area on top of the prairie, on top of the use of the sawmill, is it really zoned for what it's being used for? Can you argue it's been used for agricultural purposes? I think layering them all on top of each other, we hope that you can get to the point where, maybe not today, maybe today isn't the right time to rezone this and allow the subdivision. But, uh, thank you for considering my comments.
Absolutely, Lisa, thank you, thank you for your diligence and your, and your comments, appreciate the food for thought. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address? Kurt, we're going to come to you next, I hope, and if it just gets, your schedule gets tough, I sure understand from the law.
All right, my name's Scott Doll, also 2001 Dayton Parkway, Lisa's my wife. And I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what she and Jerry have already talked about. But, you know, really a lot of what our concern is, is that what will this development lead to? I mean, we know that Jeff's intent has always been to develop the land all the way along Dayton Parkway. And, you know, in spite of his insistence when we asked him, you know, face to face, that, that is not his intent, and, you know, that's, you know, an integrity issue that, you know, he has, has to deal with on his own. But, I, I think that from, from our standpoint, you know, right now, the regulations do not say that he cannot expand any subdivision, that, you know, that caveat right now is always, always in there. And so, as we look ahead, you know, we're looking not just short term but long term here as well. You know, I, I find it interesting that when you say you fall in love with a piece of land and, you know, you want to, you know, kind of make that your forever place, the first thing you do is decide, you know, I'd really love a subdivision in my front yard. You know, so, so that doesn't really fly with me. And, you know, when you look at, you know, tore out a bunch of trees, but we also planted 70 trees. Well, most of those trees are in the area that are going to be torn out again if the subdivision goes in. And, you know, they're all white pines that aren't, you know, necessarily in keeping with that area as, as well. But we talked a lot about, about the feel of the area as well in the neighborhood. It, it's hard to separate our neighborhood, or what we consider our neighborhood with maybe what the legal description of a neighborhood is, which I believe you consider a quarter mile around, around the area. But I mean, our, our little area is really surrounded completely by, by a ravine, so it, it is kind of a standalone property. And, yeah, I'm, I'm always of the opinion that just because maybe you meet the minimum standards and can do something, doesn't necessarily mean that you should. Now, I, I don't know why, when, you know, you see all the neighbor support that are opposed to this project, why would you, you would want to move forward with the project to begin with unless it's just about, you know, making, making money off of, off of the project. So, you know, I mean, we certainly have concerns about all that, but we also have concerns about, you know, what, what we've already seen. You know, the drainage ditch along part of Dayton Parkway was removed by, by Jeff. You know, the second access road was added, again, without consultation or, you know, permission of any of the other users of Dayton Parkway. And, you know, I, I think that that just kind of goes towards really what our expectations are moving forward, you know? You know, certainly we have a, a trust issue that, you know, that just doing the minimum amount will lead to, well, maybe they didn't say we couldn't do this, so we're going to do it, even though it might have a negative impact on, on the other property owners around. And so, our concern may not necessarily be about just what's proposed today, but again, what's proposed in the future. And again, you know, we always try to, you know, teach our daughter that, you know, just meeting the minimum requirements, you know, isn't good enough. You know, if you want to succeed in life, if you want to, you know, be a, be a good neighbor, then you're going to go above and beyond what the minimum requirements are. I also wanted to point out and really commend the Planning and Zoning Commission from the previous meeting. Yeah, I think some of us went into this thinking that it's just going to be a, kind of a rubber stamp, and so I was very pleased that they took the time to listen to everybody and really weigh in on a lot of other, other aspects of, of the situation as well. So I wanted to make sure I got that on public record as well. All right, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Eve. So this is, appreciate your comments and this ended the question, I'm just going to, do you have a question?
No, you go first this time.
Yeah, so, mine is just a comment, and it's, so I agree in theory that we as individuals ought to always try to do a little more than the minimum standard. I'm, I'm completely in there. Where you lose me is when you start to ascribe that attribute to government and say, oh, government, forget what the minimum standards are, government ought to be more restricted than that. You got to tell me where that line ends, because that's what I, I think government should absolutely be held by the, whatever those standards are, and it's got to be equal for you, as it is for Gibbons, as it is for everybody else. And if you start moving that line with government, I think it creates more issues. So, I agree with the premise, I agree with it individually, I disagree with it adamantly when it comes to government being able to say, oh, here's our minimum standards, but we're not going to follow it. Oh, that'd keep Jethlyn County Attorney Jessica Reynolds really, really busy moving that number. Morris, go ahead.
It is a form of, I guess, a general comment here. I kind of got the impression, you talked about trust right out, I'd just like to reflect to reflect that I know in my life, I had things I wanted to do, and then I found out other people weren't going to let me do them, or were going to be able to let me do them the way that I wanted to do them. And I've adjusted, okay? And so, I just wanted to let you know that my experience with the Gibbons is very narrow, but I'm viewing this more about what is presented to us is a honest attempt to utilize their property and not some, something that's going to blow up down the road. And part of that is I have to do that, is like the official, but I just, I was a little uncomfortable by some of the words you used, and I want you to know that.
Yeah, but I appreciate your feedback. And again, we've, we've been there and, you know, been experiencing what we've been experiencing for a lot, a lot longer than that, but I appreciate your comments, too.
Okay. And while whoever's next is coming up, I want to say this. I said it to the group of residents that I went out, Lorenzen and Dolls were nice enough to have me in their living room, and we had a great conversation. But one of the interesting things that was pointed out at that meeting is, for many of these longtime neighbors, this is the first time that they've gotten together face to face in talking about this. And what it tells me, and I said to them, what it tells me about the neighborhood is, this is a group of people who love their privacy. They, you know, they, they love what they have, they love their privacy, and clearly, anything that they perceive might be real, might not be real. But anything that they perceive that might infringe on that is going to, is going to really blow up. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Marty Kelly. I live at 5183 North Dayton Avenue. And the proposed number three lot is right across the ravine.
Right.
From our property.
You're just south of that proposed lot.
We are. And I guess I have a couple of concerns and a couple of questions. Septic tanks or leach fields? What happens with those? And those are all probably going to run down into the creek, and my property goes a little bit on the north side of the creek, so that's going to be possibly running off on my property.
Perfect. Let's stop right there. We've got Margaret James here, who is Environmental Health Director, and she would be, her department would be, who would be responsible for that question right there.
Excellent question. I like bringing that to the, to the front plate. We would design these septic systems so that it should not affect your property with the effluent itself. What could possibly be impacting your property is the additional water to that watershed from each of those new houses. But pathogens and that, that should not be an issue with a properly designed septic system.
And the watershed is also a question.
And I thought, I thought Mr. Gibbons addressed that earlier with some of the things that they're doing. That would be a consideration.
And another question, this doesn't really have anything to do with the zoning per se, or the acceptance, but if he builds a water feature, that little creek will be stopped from flowing on down the way. I mean, how much effect is that going to have on wildlife, whatever? I mean, there's a little creek, it's small, and like this year, it's awfully dry. He might have a little pond, but there's going to be nothing left.
Yeah, so I walked that, I walked that area a week or so ago, and it is bone dry right now.
That runs off from the little lake across the street down through, and whenever there's enough water, we get some runoff, and when there isn't, so I guess my question of a water feature is...
Yeah, and I, my understanding is the county would not regulate that. There are very specific requirements from DNR, and he'd have to meet those.
Yes. Yes, he approached me about the lake also.
Right.
And I was, I was negative in my response to that for reasons that were brought up previously.
Sure.
And I guess I just had a question for Jeff. If he had an arborist come over, did he advise you to plant those white pines too close together? I mean, I worked at Campus Services for almost 30 years, and I've done a lot of tree work, and I know a lot of trees, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Yeah, now, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask that that answer be outside this meeting because the white pines don't have anything to do with the water.
Exactly. Thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. Anybody else wishing to address this as part of the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jolene Kelly. I live at 5183 North Dayton Avenue. In response to the traffic on Dayton Avenue, about six months ago or so, the Story County Board of Supervisors approved the mine access, that the workers now at the mine use Dayton Avenue to get in and out of the mine rather than using riverside road. So, I do have a question that I believe that they need to recount the traffic on Dayton Avenue because it has dramatically increased, so I don't think that your numbers are accurate. So, I think that would be something to take into account, that those possibly need to be reassessed.
Thank you very much. Darren, how often are the traffic counts done?
Every four years.
Every four years, traffic counts are done?
The most recent was 2015.
So, it'll be coming in 19 will be the next traffic count.
And as the mine continues to grow, that will also become a, the traffic will increase more.
Okay, we can have a whole, a whole meeting on the mine impacts. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to make sure, you're talking about going 190 up in the south, you mean, or going up north?
Either way.
Okay.
Yes, because they now are using the Dayton Avenue entrance into the mine for all of their workers.
Okay.
Thank you. Ma'am.
My husband and I and family own 2020 Dayton Parkway, 2017 Dayton Parkway. We have 24 acres at the end of Dayton Parkway. We have put up a private gate there because we love our privacy, and we have a lot of traffic on that road. At least they have to stop at that to back up and go away. One thing I wanted to add is Marty said if that, that back waterway, I'm not sure what you want to call it, a creek or whatever, if that gets stopped, that runs into our land and goes around the bend. We have a lot of deer, we have a lot of animals, we have a lot of turkey out there. That would shut that access to our, connection to our other side of the creek and drive that possibly to our whole creek up. I would have a very major concern about that. We do love our wildlife, and we love our privacy.
Sure. And so, I'll just address this, you know, I'm not any kind of expert in hydrology by any strength of imagination, but it just seems to me, if DNR says, I think I heard, 18, 1 foot acre, or...
Acre feet.
Have acre feet of water, and if there was a water feature, well, Roger Underwood has a water feature right there, one of the properties just to the north of this has a water feature. And it can't back up the water in perpetuity unless you're going to, unless your depth is unlimited, right? Eventually, the water's got to flow over whatever kind of, whatever kind of dam or whatever you have there. And so, first of all, I don't think that would be, that in perpetuity, this water is going to be shut down. Secondly, I'll just remind everybody, that's a DNR issue, not a county issue.
One thing I also want to say is, I don't like the comparison of our neighborhood with all the other neighborhoods. We're not that at all. We are loaded, loaded with trees. The countries, whatever, I don't know what they're called.
Yep.
When I, we moved out there, there was a barn and cows and trees. That's all we moved out there. Didn't realize it was going to turn into what it turned into. So, our comparison is not the same.
Sure. Thank you.
I do have a question for you about how you view the neighborhood. The proposed lots would be facing Dayton Avenue, as far away from you as they can get without crossing the road, okay? So, do you see that as a daily impact on your privacy? And can you explain how that would be?
I grew up on a farm. We don't have, we didn't have houses. So, I don't like houses. If we, it's always been grassland there for us, beautiful grassland. Wildflowers are planted out there. We always said, neighbors all put wildflowers in their ditches on Parkway, Dayton Parkway, as we drove by.
So, it's a visual impact for you, not a... All right, it's just, as opposed to literally people intruding upon your land? Because you've dated a lot, I'm sorry, you've dated.
I don't like neighbors.
Okay, well...
That's why I moved out there.
All right. And I'm going to stop there, because then we'll get into kind of a lack of...
Yeah, we know, yeah.
I can imagine they're not, sometime, some point, be using our private drive for party parking, extra things that go on.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to turn to the board. Questions, comments, or where we go from here?
In my mind, I have severance in the fact that we're talking about frontage to Dayton Avenue. We have a private occupied dwelling, we have a portion of the ground to the back that was once something that is a fascinating historical walk, and we all get it. But, to me, the conversation turns on what was addressed and what is proposed, not what could be, what shouldn't be, or what was, or what they'd like to see maintained.
I want to appreciate the concerns that Mr. Sloan brought up about the small prairie area. It does sit right next to Dayton Avenue, so that, for me, makes me believe, from being a native Iowan and having lived in rural areas and in urban areas, that there's not likely to be a large amount of wildlife using that when they have the seven acres across Dayton Road with the conservation park. But I appreciate what you're saying. We always need to look at what are we conserving and what are we, what are we taking away? And I, I've not been convinced that the small patch there in front, next to Dayton Avenue, that we're taking away significant land for prairie conservation. I also agree that we're looking at what is in front of us and what we know to be true, and the regulations say that that large lot where the Gibbons' house is and the west cannot be subdivided again per our own regulations. I can't, I do not have a crystal ball about the fact that some future board may change that. I don't see me bringing forth a proposal to make that change. And the final thing is the definition of neighborhood. And thank you, Liz, for being so honest about that, you know, because there are some people who would never admit, "Hey, I want my space." But I do see with the properties fronting Dayton Avenue and there being over an acre each, that not only does it beat the minimums, but it's probably the highest and best use for this property once you go away from the fact of the conservation, because you are talking about a fringe area, a transitional area, with all that housing just to the north and I'm down.
Okay, super. And then for the, for the neighbors who took time out of their day to come here and took time out of their evening to meet with me last week, I end up kind of where I told you I was going to end up. I'm so appreciative that you were here. I'm so appreciative that you, that you shared your concerns. I thought you had a lot of great questions. I hope you feel like we at least tried to address them, maybe not to your satisfaction, but we at least tried to address them. And at the end of the day, I'm going to come down exactly where our regulations tell me I need to come down, which this does, you may not like the minimum standards, but this does need the minimum standards for approval, and that's where I come down. Jerry, Emily, anything to add before we get to consideration of this?
Well, you talk about minimum standards. This is R1 Residential District, which is a 25,000 square foot minimum required. So, this part exceeds the minimum.
So, what is the minimum? If you say 25,000, what it is, what's the minimum? On a square footage?
On our one lot for a dwelling, it's a 25,000 square foot minimum. An acre is 43,560.
Okay. Or, anything further, or, so we've got two different items that, you know, pass or fail. We need to, we need to take some kind of action.
So, you're going to do motions, we go from A1 to R1?
The first item is the rezoning request.
And I would note that this is the first consideration.
First consideration of that, then the resolution only gets one consideration, right? So, we'll start with ordinance 263.
I would move that we approve ordinance number 263, the proposed Story County zoning map amendment from A1 Agricultural District to the R1 Transitional Residential District as put forth in the case REZ 0617.
And that would be first consideration, with second consideration coming...
With second consideration coming on October 4th, or can we pass it next week?
Third.
October 3rd.
Third, thank you, October 3rd.
Second. We got a motion and a second to pass our ordinance 263, which would change our zoning map and make this R1. This would be first consideration. Second consideration would come on October 3rd. Now, it is tradition of this board many times to waive, waive third and final consideration, but in a case like this, we would not waive second consideration, so this would come back to us in two weeks, this portion of it. Any further discussion, board? We've got a motion and a second. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Ordinance 263 passes, first consideration, and it will come back to us on October 3rd. Now, we got Resolution 1835 to deal with.
I'd move Resolution 1835, close Dayton Park, major subdivision, preliminary plat, Gibbons rezoning as presented.
I second.
We got a motion and a second. This is the portion that creates the three new billable lots, and then the one to the existing resident and everything to the west. Further discussion?
None.
Chee?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1835 passes, this will not come back to us again. And Lisa, come on up.
So, Lisa Lorenzen, Stephen Dustin. Lisa Lorenzen, 2001 Dayton Parkway. So, you passed it, including that private easement at the top northeast corner?
We passed it as presented, including the easement at the top.
Okay. Could I ask for an explanation why you felt that was relevant to the development?
It's not relevant for me. I'll just speak for me, and these two can speak for them. Not relevant to the development, but anytime you put a lot in, if you, I think very clearly, anybody who suggests that someday the Gibbons are not hoping to develop what's there on the west, I think it can be a misnomer. They can't, as we sit here today. But, when you create a lot, if you have something like that you foresee in the future, you put in an easement, I think that's a normal course of action for us here in the county.
In my packet, I remember reading, and maybe it was something that Mr. Gibbons presented or made a stack, there's a lot in this packet, it noted that preference at the same time as we created lot 1, 2, 3, and 4, the lot 1, I think it has something to do with the uniformity of the width of that? So, okay, if you know something that I don't know, but that's what was presented...
No, I think Lisa's concern is valid. I mean, what, you mentioned it, Morris, is if your concern is the western portion of that property, the be all, end all to whether that can ever get developed, it should be no secret here, right? The be all, end all of whether that can ever get developed is all about our rules and regulations for private roads and the ability to have enough of an easement that you could get in and out of there. And what the Gibbons have proposed here, and we've now approved, or at least on first reading, is, or we approved that as part of the ordinance, is this easement where if that ever does happen, whoever buys lot number one has already agreed that there is the ability to take part of that property as, for the essential...
You're correct. It's our future planning. This is not something that was required in our subdivision standards, it's something that the...
But it's a normal thing that comes forward to us when we do the subdivision. Okay. That is the end of this. Now, we're going to move, we've had Mr. Kurt Youngberg sitting waiting for us, we're going to get through Mr. Youngberg, then we're going to take a break. Thank you, everybody, for being here this morning. Kurt, come on up.
Thank you very much.
You're Mr. Lowen?
Jensen.
Jensen, you're Mr. Jensen. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Should have gone first.
Okay.
You got the flush.
All right. Kurt Youngberg. So, Kurt contacted me a few weeks ago with, with an interest in getting more involved at the county, in the community, and just reached out to me about potential service on board and commission. Deb and I were really struggling to find a suitable applicant for our asset. We had our joint, joint funders meeting with asset the other day. We were the only funded... funder who still has a hole on our volunteers. It struck, I went to Deb and I, and I told her about Kurt's, uh, interest, and she said, "Oh my goodness, he, he would be perfect for asset if, if he would consider it." Uh, a couple of things I would point out, we've never had anybody on asset who lived in Gilbert. He does, uh, we like the demographics, uh, that, that Kurt brings us in terms of a little more youth, uh, on that asset group, and so Deb and I met with him, had a great conversation. Somehow, we did scare him off, and that's what led us to today. Kurt, take away.
Uh, I was a volunteer on the Gilbert Fire Department for about six years, and had a third child, and an old injury kinda kept me from performing as much as I would like to on that, and time constraints, and so I, I bowed out of there about a year ago, and I've been thinking about other ways to get involved and help out, so, uh, as Mr. Sanders said, it was just something I was like, "Who do I know that might be able to point me in the right direction and get me in touch with people that can, you know, I can talk to about doing so?" So, here I am.
We were given some questions to ask, so we'll ask a little.
All right.
Okay, all right. What would you like to accomplish as a member of Asset?
Uh, from what I have read, and what, what, um, Deb and Rick had, had sent me, what Asset does, um, I mean, first of all, I've lived in Story County basically my whole life, and I have been aware that there are, uh, a number of organizations that, uh, are involved in, in trying to allocate money to go to these programs. I had no idea how many there were, and how many programs there were, uh, something over 90 programs and 30-plus, um, organizations that, that have those programs, and, uh, gaining a greater understanding of how it all works in general, um, just understanding where you can get, um, all of these different sources trying to accomplish what I would assume, I haven't been on any meetings yet, but I assume a lot of them are trying to accomplish very similar goals, but without being redundant, stepping on each other's toes and, and, and doing the same thing. Um, you know, I, my main goal would be basically just to kinda step in initially and get a feel for how it all works, and then I, I think there's probably been people before me that have tried to do this as well, but definitely streamlining and, and making sure that, uh, those funds are used appropriately and efficiently, I guess.
Yeah, Marty, questions?
Maybe it's, Kurt, I mean, sorry, I was just sorting out things from the last thing, and looking forward to the rest of the meeting, but how did you become aware of this position?
I just, uh, sent an email to Mr. Sanders about, you know, is there anything available for getting involved with volunteering? I understand, um, that there's a number of different boards and, and commissions that, that people are on in Story County, and whether, uh, it's paid positions or volunteer positions, that they all have, uh, you know, their own little place to make sure everything gets done and works appropriately, and my understanding is this is a volunteer position, uh, and I would keep it that way, I'm not interested in making a, a career out of it, but I definitely would, uh, that, yeah.
Well, it's a volunteer position, but Deb and I went through with him the times that it's a pretty intensive, uh, volunteer position, uh, position, and the times it's not. And I'll just tell you, I, you know, I've known Kurt for almost 20 years now, since, since he was a real young fellow, uh, and, uh, what I think he would bring to Asset, and one of the reasons that I'm really advocating for us to go ahead and make him one of our volunteers, he is really, really inquisitive, uh, he gets the numbers in sense, he's a guy who really likes the numbers, uh, and he's unafraid, uh, to speak up if he's got a question, and I view many times our Asset volunteers, we need that instigator of the question, because if one person in the room has it, more people have it, and they're just not willing to ask, uh, and, and that, and the fact that it's almost noon, uh, let's go through whatever we need to go through, but I believe he'd be a perfect volunteer to fill our Assets up.
I agree also, and I've not known him as long as you have, and we probably, we probably disagree on probably a couple of things on Facebook over here.
Probably.
But what I've always found is that, um, you asked good questions, you expressed your opinion, um, without saying, "Loris, you blah, blah, blah." And, um, and I know that you care about the community, having encountered you with your, during the firefighter thing, so, um, I agree.
Would you make that as a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept Kurt, Kurt Youngberg, um, appoint him to the Asset as one of our Asset Volunteers.
I'd be glad to second that. All right, so, any further discussion? Anything to add before we vote on you?
Nope.
Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for hanging around.
Absolutely.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we're gonna come back and try to move through the rest of your agenda. Brenda, please apologize to both Dan and Drew for me, one of those minutes.
So I'm gonna cancel my meeting with Deb and Andy.
All right, now we're on to the first consideration of ordinance 264 and, uh, Resolution 1836.
Okay, um, this is another rezoning and subdivision case, uh, the applicant in this, uh, case is, is Benjamin Ngera Jensen of Huxley. The property in question here is located in Section 34 of Washington Township, um, at 27932 Timber Road, uh, just east of Kelly. So the nature of the request is, again, a rezoning and a subdivision, this time it's a minor subdivision, um, but the rezoning request, um, is from the AR Agricultural Residential District with conditions, to the AR Agricultural Resil- Residential District without conditions. Um, I'm gonna go over quickly the, the existing conditions, and then, uh, we'll get to the rezoning a little more in, in later on. The existing conditions on the property include, uh, to limit the number of equine animals to three, uh, no further divisions or subdivisions of the parcel shall occur, a stormwater management plan should be submitted to mitigate, uh, and capture runoff from the development of the proposed site, um, and then number four, um, a manure management plan, um, should be developed by the applicant, uh, to be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department. Um, this was in direct response to a specific rezoning request, um, to take this property, uh, was originally zoned R1, um, and rezone it to AR for, um, the possibility to have horses on the property. So those are specific to a, uh, one property owner's, um, rezoning request. Um, the minor subdivision request is to divide the existing parcels, uh, which is about five and a half acres, to, into three lots, um, between 1.31 and 2.37 acres in size, uh, for two additional single-family dwellings. Um, all of the lots would take access off of an access easement, um, that would extend north from 280th Street, um, and this is an alternative compliance request. Um, here is the conditional rezoning agreement signed by, um, the applicant back in 2006, and we just included this in here for, um, more information, if you wanna go into detail on that, we can, but for now, we will move on. The location of this property, um, is just about equidistant, um, from the city of Ames and the city of Kelly, about a mile and a half south of Ames, and a mile and a half east of the city of Kelly in Washington Township. Looking at a high-level picture of the area, the subject property, um, is on the lower left-hand corner here, uh, you can see, um, 280th here and Timber Road. As you travel north on Timber Road, um, you will see, uh, the Finch subdivision, uh, the First Edition here, the Second Edition here, um, and then the Timber Road Estates subdivision that was recently approved by the Board of Supervisors. Loman's Third Edition is down here, um, on the, the bottom of your screen. So the zoning, uh, of this property is currently AR, as we had talked about, um, it was rezoned from R1 to AR with conditions in 2006 for the purpose of permitting horses. In terms of the Ames Urban Fringe Plan Land Use Framework Map, this is the same designation as the previous case, the Rural Service and Agricultural Conservation Area. Um, the subject property is, uh, designated rural residential, um, and a portion of it is, uh, designated natural area. Um, in terms of the surrounding land use, there are, uh, 20 single-family dwellings within a quarter mile of this property, um, again, the, the different subdivisions, uh, nearby. Uh, just so, a little background on this, um, property, Loman's Second, uh, subdivision was platted in, in 1973 with eight proposed lots. In 2006, lots 2 through 7, and a part of lot 8, as well as the never-improved right-of-way of Darlene Road were vacated. Um, these vacations, uh, created the existing parcel C, um, which is the subject property today. Of the land located within a quarter mile of this proposed rezoning, 80, uh, about 80% is in an agricultural use and 20% is residential. Uh, here's the subject property, um, this entire area is, oops, well, almost the entire area is a Loman, um, Second subdivision, excluding this lot here, this is not platted in the subdivision, um, but Lot 1 has a single-family dwelling and Lot 8, and then the, the remainder of the subdivision is considered parcel C, the subject property. Utility and related service providers, um, Consumer Xenia, Kelly Fire Department, we did receive, um, all the, the correspondence we asked for, um, in per, in terms of serving, uh, the proposed development. Um, so the subdivision here, uh, it would be, again, to, uh, divide the parcel into three lots for two family, uh, two single-family dwellings. The proposed Lot 1 would be 1.55 acres into the southwest of the existing single-family dwelling, proposed Lot 2, 1.31 acres into the southeast of the existing dwelling, and , uh, proposed Lot 3 would contain the existing single-family dwelling and, uh, 2.37 acres, um, of land. Outlot A, um, is the current property owner's intention to transfer that, um, area, which is currently in an access easement, uh, to the property owners to the north, and I can, Outlot A, we'll look at the designation there, but, um, this area is, uh, really only accessible from Timber Road, and serves, uh, Lot 1 of Loman's Second, uh, subdivision, and then that unplatted lot. It's really not accessible from, from this area, so, um, the property owner is looking to, to, um, transfer that property to...
And that was just gonna be the street for the subdivision when it was originally reported, that'd be...
Yep. Okay, so here's the proposed subdivision, um, again, Outlot A, um, where these two properties take access off of Timber Road, uh, proposed Lot 1 in the southeast corner, southwest corner, sorry, uh, proposed Lot 2, uh, and then proposed Lot 3 with existing single-family dwelling. Uh, so some site photos, here's the existing single-family dwelling, uh, on proposed Lot 3, and the proposed access point from 280th Street. Um, this is looking northeast toward the property, uh, to the east of the proposed subdivision. Um, looking east along 280th Street, uh, looking south across 280th Street, um, and then west along 280th Street from the intersection of Timber Road. Um, the property to the west, uh, across Timber Road. Uh, this is Lot 8 of Loman's Second Edition, um, taken from Timber Road, so that, there's that single-family dwelling there. Um, looking at the existing single-family dwelling on proposed Lot 3 from, from Timber Road, um, the, uh, here's looking north from the existing single-family dwelling on proposed Lot 3, uh, the accessory structure, um, is actually on Lot 8 of Loman's Second Edition, so this, this accessory structure really, um, is part of that, that previous house we showed.
It's part, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
It's, uh, an accessory stru-, it's on proposed Lot 8, so, uh, it's, it's on the same property as this.
There's, okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry. Um, here's looking west toward Timber Road from proposed Lot 3, um, southeast at proposed Lot 1, um, looking south toward 280th Street and the proposed shared access easement, um, and then looking southwest toward proposed Lot 2. Um, this is just the Outlot A, this is looking south from Timber Road, um, at the Egress, Egress, uh, easement for the two dwellings located to the north. Um, here's one of the dwellings, um, and then, you can see there's a row of trees, um, kind of stopping any real, uh, movement between, uh, this, this northern area of the property and, and the bulk of the property. Okay, standards of approval for rezoning, um, this is designated, um, rural residential in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, single-family residential uses, um, with a maximum average net density of one unit per acre, clustering of residential sites, um, and then rural residential development, uh, limiting rural residential development on prime agricultural land. Meeting the intents of the district, the proposed lots meet the bulk requirements of the AR Agricultural Residential District, um, and is, and we feel are consistent with nearby residential lots. Um, the proposed rezoning, um, which should be compatible with surrounding land uses, immediately, uh, adjacent to the R1, um, there's, there's properties that are zoned R1, Transitional Residential, immediately to the north of this, um, the original plating of the Loman Second subdivision was zoned R1, um, and included a total of eight lots, um, and this proposed subdivision is for three lots, um, which is half the size of the original subdivision. Natural area designation on the Land Use Framework Map is located on, uh, Outlot A, and then, uh, the eastern edge of proposed Lot 3. Outlot A will remain in the ease, uh, in the ingress, egress driveway easement, um, there's no development proposed here. Proposed Lot 3 does include the existing single-family dwelling, and, uh, future development will be discouraged in the natural area. Um, this, the fifth standard is not applicable to this rezoning request. Um, this is a minor subdivision, there's no more than four development lots, um, being proposed, um, all will be, uh, have frontage on an existing public street, although the request, uh, is for proposed Lot 3 to take access from 280th Street, uh, this lot does have frontage on Timber Road, um, so that meets, uh, this requirement. No new land is set apart for streets, alleys, parks, schools, um, and no agriculture or minor subdivisions have been approved, um, since 2003. Uh, this is the alternative compliance request, uh, we have a, um, a maximum, uh, width for the, uh, for access easements, shared access easements of 50 feet, um, that, that is what they are requesting alternative compliance to. Again, the, um, this shows the right-of-way here, the easement would, um, based on our code, would need to be parallel to that, and then there'd be a 50-foot, uh, width maximum. The proposed, uh, access easement would extend, uh, about 200 feet north, um, to, to proposed Lot 3. This does a couple of things, this, um, provides one, um, access point off of 280th, um, it will reduce the number of accesses off of Timber Road, um, there are, the current access to, to proposed Lot 3, um, and the, uh, the home on Lot 8, uh, there are, do not meet the 300-foot separation distance requirement, um, and so that would help, um, with that. It would also, um, give, uh, proposed Lot 3 access off of a, a paved road. Again, 250 feet, um, extension from 280th Street to proposed Lot 3, uh, that would remove the, uh, driveway off of Timber Road, or Timber Drive, I'm sorry, and, um, the county, and, and Planning and Development staff do support this alternative, uh, compliance request with the minor subdivision application. Comments from the inter-agency review team, the engineer asked to have that existing driveway removed, um, the assessor, um, just, uh, spoke to the Iowa Plating Law. Oops, I'm sorry, there we go. Um, Planning and Development just had some, uh, questions about the, the purpose of Outlot A, um, want the attention's word with that, um, and just, uh, we requested the, um, statements by the Fire Department and, um, the utility providers, um, just some clarification items on the plaque. Comments from the public, um, notice letters were sent to the property owners within a quarter mile for, um, prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, uh, we also did a notice, uh, public hearing publication in the three county newspapers, um, a copy of the application materials were sent to the city of Ames, Gilbert, and Kelly. Um, Ames and Gilbert expressed no concerns, uh, with the rezoning or subdivision, uh, the city of Kelly waived their right to review the subdivision at their September 12th, uh, city council meeting. city council meeting. Planning and Development staff did receive a phone call, which generated inquiries on the proposed development. An adjacent neighbor did submit several signed petitions on Monday afternoon, yesterday afternoon, regarding the existing restrictive covenants. And then Planning and Development staff also received a letter yesterday afternoon with concerns regarding the possibility of horses on the proposed lots and the odor that could impact nearby property owners.
We did email a copy of those documents from the adjacent neighbor to the board.
All right, so Planning and Development staff do support the proposed rezoning from the AR Agricultural Residential District with conditions, to remove those conditions and remain in the AR Agricultural Residential District. The underlying zoning district will not change. The proposed lots meet the AR District. No crop will be taken out of production. The existing zoning, worse, conditions were specific to the previous property owner's request. Now that that's changed hands, we feel that they're not really applicable. The proposed rezoning conforms to the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. The proposed use conforms to the statement of intent of the AR Agricultural Residential District, and the proposed use will better conform to surrounding land use, development patterns on the original proposal, which, which was twice the number of lots. In terms of the subdivision, we also recommend approval on the subdivision. Again, creating three lots for two additional single-family dwellings. The proposed subdivision meets our land development requirements for minor subdivision plaques. All, all lots will have frontage on a public road. That, that access to, to Timber Road for Proposed Lot Three will be removed, and they're setting aside no streets, alleys, parks, open space in the plant. So Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with a six-zero vote on both items at their September 6th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So again, we have two motions, if you will, the first consideration of the rezoning, and then the consideration of the subdivision. Those should be two separate motions.
Super. Thank you. Any questions from Gary Emble? Talk to me about covenants.
The, I don't know if we have a copy of them. Along with that rezoning that took place in 2006, there were covenants that were a part of that rezoning request. One of the items in the covenants talk about the fact that it should not be further divided. But with regard to restrictive covenants, the county has no enforcement or administrative authority with regard to them.
Well, those go away when that was vacated anyway.
These were adopted in, or recorded in 2006. So these are more recent.
March 27. So the, the rezoning included that conditional rezoning document, which addresses the, the fact that it should not be further divided. There's a comment on there about a newer management plan, no more than three horses, and what else? A fourth item.
Stole mater.
Stole mater drainage. But we think that this is within the legal authority for the current property owner to request a change to those current conditions, and Mr. Jensen is requesting to have those removed from the current zoning. The base zoning would stay the same, agricultural residential, without those four conditions, is what he's requesting.
So just to kind of rephrase and follow up on Marty's question, covenants themselves are not something that the county gets involved with. That's a legal agreement between parties, individuals. Those conditions, that's what we're doing here today, is a request to get rid of the actual conditions placed upon the rezoning at that time, correct?
That's correct.
The horses, we no longer say you can, we no longer dictate how many horses you can have on a parcel, correct? Or no?
Well, in, in the agricultural residential district, we permit horse stables, private or public.
Okay.
So I think if we receive a request in our department to have a horse on an AR District, I think we've been calling to say that that's a permitted use, because horse stables, whether they be public or private, are permitted use. You know, to compare to that, in the A1 District, livestock is considered a permitted use, and horses are livestock.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that one, okay.
You guys good? Just adoration on, you sit there and see it all too often, and we just went through this, but City of, the Urban Fringe of Ames, it's just like, did they look at this? I mean, it seems like, it seems like, we just went through one of these, and that was contentious, and it seems like if there was anything that the City of Ames could have touched on, that they would have, but they passed it through, as they've done with this. Gilbert looked at the previous one, now we got Kelly, and they're just waving and pushing it on to us. I mean, are they, I mean, when that process happens, what hap, can you tell me what happens in their offices, if you know?
In a rural residential district, under our agreement in that Ames Urban Fringe Plan, they are to waive their review authority. So they did what, in accordance to that agreement, they waived their authority. But oftentimes, they will also contact us and provide some comments, but I don't believe that we've received anything.
Not on this one.
Okay, well, I'm just, okay.
I think the rest of my questions are for the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, come on up.
Sorry.
Start by introducing yourself, and then any comments you have, and then we'll have questions.
Ben Jensen, 27, 932 Timber Road, applicant, owner of the property. Not much for comments, a pretty straightforward property was sold to someone in 2006, and that got lost to the bank and has been vacant for eight years, and so I purchased it from the bank and have been working on the property and recently moved in, and just see an opportunity to have, like, have access directly off of 280th, which I have a driveway for it granted right now, and I'm working on that. The outlot to the north, have no reason to own my neighbor's driveways and not use it, so just want to clean that up and then utilize, I don't have any interest in putting a horse, so the original zoning of this was, so if they could have a horse and have a big farm management, I have no desire to have horses, so I'm trying to get to a better use, whether that's today or later, you know, with the covenants that we're working through, and that's a separate agreement, but that's, that's where I'm at, so.
Super. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to go back through this timeline, because now I'm hearing about the bank, I'm even more confused, all right? Emily had shown a document out there that I understood had been signed by you in 2000?
No, no, I, I just purchased it not even a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's been empty. Dave Sukup was the previous owner that had the agreement for the rezoning as well as the covenants.
All right, thank you. That, that clears up some confusion for me about, about this. So you just purchased it from the bank?
Yep.
All right. And so now you're asking for a rezon, you never made any kind of promise to anybody that you would leave it as done.
No, the previous owner did, and they, and that's, that's.
That's their commitment that is done. It wasn't you who did.
Okay, honoring all that, that's all, that's all fine, I'm trying to work through all that.
I understand.
I am, got the cards that I, no, it's a great property, and I just, that's.
Okay, all right.
Anything else, Ward?
No, that was my hang-up.
Marty, anything?
No, very straightforward.
In that case, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who'd like to address this situation. Thanks for bearing with us.
Just been having lunch. Oh, yeah.
Don't matter, you're still.
I'm Dave Lowman, and I'm at 27887 Timber Road, and our family, is the family that placed the covenants on the property. They still are in existence, they've been reported, and they are legally binding in civil court, is my understanding. If you authorize this, you're kind of, and we don't, and the Jensen's and I don't come to an agreement, and I don't sign off on those covenants, you're kind of creating a stairway to nowhere, but we are tentatively trying to work out an agreement that's, that's fair to both parties. That may never happen, it may happen, it may not, it's just something that we're going to have to work out the details and then, and then see executed, I guess. So I, you know, I mean, I don't have many comments other than that. Without that agreement, I don't intend to allow the, the covenants to be waived, I guess, without coming to.
But, but as you mentioned, that's a, that's a civil issue between you and Mr. Jensen.
Right. So I, you know, this, this is all a very rapid learning curve for me, I didn't expect to ever have to deal with this, and, you know, I was kind of looking for guidance from everybody as much as anything, and insight and advice, I guess, but it is something we're trying to work out, and like I say, it's kind of a stairway to nowhere if we don't work it out, but, but I guess I'm amenable to it as long as that's understood by everybody, I guess.
Dave, kind of referencing a neighbor who signed a copy of your statement, kind of, about the young covenants and talking about tranquility except, said in the neighborhood, also wrote a letter, talking about concern about smells from horses. And, and yet I'm not hearing any desire here to be, to be hosting a stable, not that it can't legally be, but.
You're doing something in regarding to zoning, and I'm not sure whether that automatically makes that issue go away or not. I'm not clear at all, that's part of what I'm looking at from you guys.
That is why I asked, yeah. Because it doesn't seem like everybody's understanding the same, on the same page even about.
I would, I need to go back and talk to these people that I've asked for sigs, signatures, and I need to be able to give them a, a straight answer. Does that go away when it's rezoned automatically, or does the, are horses still a possibility?
A horse is still a possibility, correct?
I think that in the AR District, you know, if you have a private or public stable, I don't know why you can't have one horse or two horses.
Something you could have.
A private stable or not, maybe a little horse.
So the covenants we placed said that up to five large animals could be allowed if they were, if they went to the, to you folks and asked for the proper channel, and threw the proper channels to ask for it, which they apparently did, Sukups did. So yeah, I would like to know if that's, and I'm hearing that it is still possible to have large, or to have three horses, I guess it's limited, it's now limited to that. We offered, we sent five large animals, and now I'm hearing it's now maximum of three horses remains possible.
I would say that the existing zoning does limit it to three horses. Where the applicant is requesting to remove those conditions. Elsewhere in the Story County zoning ordinances, we do not limit the number of livestock or horses on any one property.
So you're asking to remove, and I, and they can, and they can be reassured that there won't be.
I'm getting rid of the, the covenants, it's still being, it's two separate issues.
Yeah, but I'm just looking, I'm just need to be able to respond to the people that have these serious concerns, and that is that you're waiving, we can eliminate that possibility of large animals, is that correct? That's one of the things.
What's happening right now is waiving the restriction, so allowing it from a zoning perspective.
It's taking the condition, so it's, it's making it just a blanket zoning, it means that the county's out of it. It does not change whatever agreement you guys may have, or whatever agreement, previous agreement may in fact be enforced. We're not weighing in on what's enforced, what's not enforced. It doesn't preclude you guys being able to make whatever agreement you make. It just takes us back to the most basic county zoning that there is. I'm not even real clear why the county got involved in this in the first place, in 2006.
It's, is the, we put something that you could put in, up to five animals if the county approved it.
Absolutely, and, and so I'm really appreciative of any neighborhood covenants that might come in. I get really queasy, as you heard from our previous conversation, when you start putting extra hurdles and authorities to government, I get really queasy with that, just because it's a slippery slope. I prefer things to just be as clean and standard as they can be, and then whatever agreement the two of you come to, horses, whatever, that's between, that's between you guys.
I drove out there last night, okay? Ended up talking to the very next-door neighbor to the north, or actually, the daughter-in-law, she's out with a little baby, and I was looking for, back to this letter that several of your neighbors signed copies of that you wrote, talking about compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood, once again, to go out physically, see it. And as I saw on 240th, I mean, there are several acreage lots right in a row, and there would be two the east, these two lots would be exactly like that, right next to a row of those, and ditto after your land, which is on, I believe, the west side of Timber Road, correct? You guys still own some of that? And then there's more of these houses set up in a row, they're kind of with long, long acres, all right, you know, horizontal, it's good. So my question is, why would these two not be compatible? They're fronting, once again, a blacktop, and.
I don't know that I ever called them non-compatible.
Okay, so maybe I just took some of the wording, and thank you, I'll just end there, but that was my question.
They were disallowed, but they're not, I never called them non.
Thank you.
But private landowners will have to agree with whatever they want to agree to, right?
I just wondered.
Anything else?
I don't, I don't think so. I want to have some advice, I mean, this is, like I say, a.
I think you're doing exactly what you're supposed to do, dig in and learn, and, and hopefully that it sounds like you two are on a really good path, hopefully you can get to an agreement, but quite frankly, I don't think it impacts what we're doing. So, yeah, we would more for you guys to come to some sort of agreement, although we're not going to get involved today. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this? I'm going to close the public hearing, I'm going to turn to the board for potential action.
So you're looking for two motions there?
Yep, we're going to start with the ordinance, I believe.
Mm-hmm, the rezoning request, yep.
Oops, I'm wrong. I move for a consideration ordinance two sixty-four, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County. Pass or no?
I would second, and first reading.
Yep, first, I said first reading.
Oh, first.
Okay, we're setting second reading for.
Setting the second reading for October 3rd?
Yep, perfect, and you are willing to second all of that?
I second all of it.
Further discussion? Gary Emble, anything to add? Okay, Chee, Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, ordinance two sixty-four passes, first reading, second, second consideration will come on October 3rd. Next is Resolution 1836.
I would, I would move Resolution 1836 as put forth at SUB 12-17 with the request of alternate compliance. I'll turn it over.
Motion, second, further comments? Anything to add, Gary Emble? Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, Resolution 1836 passes, and it will not come back to us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sorry, we don't get lunch either.
Now, we haven't been doing this lately.
No.
Okay, so now we get to go all the way back to page one of the agenda, and we get to hear the corporate report from the AEDC, Brenda Dryer, and previously we had Dan Colhan and Drew Camp, but we lost both of them as this went for two and a half hours. Brenda, that's why you get the big bucks, you get to sit down and listen to all of that.
That's right. I appreciate my boss's attempt, because he originally told me he wasn't going to be.
Noted, and he was here, and we, all three of us attended the joint AEDC chamber meeting this morning, and really, really well done, and as all everything your organization does, you did a good job.
So as per our, our contract for services with the Board of Supervisors, I'm here to do our, our quarterly report for September. I'm going to start by actually taking a look at the numbers, and, and these are numbers that, that are important to all of us. The unemployment rate, as you know, it takes a while for the state to actually report on this, I, the new numbers came out today, I just haven't had much of a chance to review those, I know they have not changed a whole lot, but in July, the Story County unemployment I know they have not changed a whole lot, but in July, the Story County unemployment rate was 2.4% compared to the state at 3.2. If you follow that number, you do know that it is up from what we normally showed for a time when school is in session. So, shouldn't be surprising to any of us with a very large employer in Ames that doesn't have students 12 months of the year at the level they have them during the fall and the spring. We are impacted from a point where that number does go up. So, that is higher, but if you dig into it and you look at the previous year, you'd see the previous year, we were at 2.8%. So, I think the thing to look at is, is that, you know, we are down, there are jobs being created, and if you dig into those numbers and the data, a lot of those jobs being created are actually in the private sector. I did wanna give you a little glimpse of kind of where we've been. We, I try to meet at least every month or every six week, six weeks with our advanced manufacturing community. We did meet in August, and so, since I started in April, we've actually had contact with 32 businesses, some of them the same, but that's been our participation in the advanced manufacturing meetings. And during the month of August, I visited seven companies for a total of 22 that I've visited year-to-date. Again, some of those have been repeats based on some follow-up requirements. It's also important, I think, to understand that beyond a physical visit, just maintaining connections with our local companies. So, year-to-date, we've had 102 of those, and those would just be my contacts, and if you look at the pure breadth of the different companies we're reaching out to in the month of August, that was actually 20. So, on the workforce side of things, so again, you are great supporters of our workforce initiatives. We have K-12 engagement, which I'll talk about in a little bit, summer internship program, Home Based Iowa, concierge program, the job posting board, something I'll be excited to share more details with in December as we continue to expand the things we're trying to do to support our business community. We are going to be a part of a Iowa initiative called MyIowaFuture.com. So, that'll have more details in my December presentation. And again, we're pleased to be working with Iowa Works on a job fair, first time in about 15 years that one's actually been held in Story County, so that'll be next week on September 27th. In terms of K-12 engagement, this is old news to the three of you, because you heard that today, but for those of you in the audience...
Oh, it's exactly right.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I've had a little few other things in there before, but the scale program, which includes all of the school districts in the county, actually has 51 students enrolled from six different school districts. The Business Engagement Collaborative is an initiative of the Ames High School. They have 25 students enrolled in that, and 23 different businesses involved, which is amazing. And Mr. Cox is here. I know he's a part of that Business Engagement Collaborative initiative. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that the Career Academy, the Huntsucker Career Academy, we have 184 Story County students participating in that, and every one of the school districts has representation. So, the four tracks of the scale are highlighted and where we're meeting. We're looking for a spot to land with the renewable energy and biosciences in the spring, and because it is confusing, we're utilizing students, the three that are pictured there, to actually develop a menu of offerings that we can share with our business community to help them get engaged with our students in Story County if they're not already doing so. In terms of recapping our summer internship program, we averaged, we had five events. We averaged 139 interns. We had, on the average, 19 different businesses involved, including Story County sent their interns to our program. If you look at the feedback that we collected via Survey Monkey, the most popular event was number three, dealing with the successful career launch, and Mr. Adam Carroll. If you've not had a chance to hear him, he does a great job connecting with this group and building on the importance of networking. Their favorite part was the speakers. Their willingness to recommend future events to friends was at 73%. And the yes or maybe, in terms of seeing themselves at Ames and Story County, was 85.45%. So, it gives us a little bit of hope that our efforts will pay off with some folks taking permanent jobs in the county. Home Based Iowa is something I've not talked about necessarily in my other two updates to you. The state has really been going through a process of trying to re-energize their efforts. So, on October 3rd, they're holding an event at Camp Dodge, and I have a handful of employers that have expressed a significant interest in that program and will be attending with me, so I'm very excited about that. I believe it's time to push that program again. I know LeAnn and I have had some conversations, and she feels very much the same way I do. We've got a good base of businesses, but I think we need to be looking for more, and I think we'll be looking to our scale students to help us put a little bit stronger framework together so we can connect folks that are taking jobs that meet their criteria here in Story County to the excellent incentives that we put forth to have them establish themselves permanently here. So, stay posted, but we are putting a few more efforts towards Home Based Iowa.
Brenda, I have a question about...
Thank you. Thanks for stopping me.
You were so cheery about that. So, on the Home Based Iowa, you said you have a number of businesses who are interested. Do they range from small businesses to large businesses, or in particular for us?
Partially. So, everybody that is designated as a Home Based Iowa employer gets the email, but just like everybody, we're deluged with the emails. So, I followed up particularly after our first visit when the state didn't show up to talk about it, Loris. I reached back out to those advanced manufacturers, and Craig Tool and Dan Foss, and I think American Packaging will be in attendance at that event with me, so...
All three of them are desperate for employees.
That is correct.
And so, I think it's 100%, right? I just wanna point out these last, the last three programs that you talked about, really for the board, until the Board of Supervisors became involved with workforce development. And I'm not trying to draw a direct line, but none of these programs existed before Story County got involved in workforce and started funding some of these programs. They just didn't happen anywhere in Story County. And so, I think it's a real credit to the impact that we can have as a board when we put our minds to something that's needed here in the community.
It really has been a catalyst to take workforce to a very different level, so I wanted to share with you some Work in Ames statistics. So, we rolled out the enhancements. They were done really before I came, but they happened to roll out about the same time I arrived. So, if you look at the views from April to August, we've reached out and had almost 40,000 views on our WorkinAmes.com, so I'm very energized about that. We've got continued work to do. We do Facebook advertising up here, Get the Visions magazine. Dan and I are really excited that we actually were featured. We purchased an ad this time to try to drive traffic. We're part of a 35,000 distribution that goes out to ISU alumni that have graduated in the last 10 years. There's only one sponsor on that, and that is Work in Ames. We will have our first sponsorship of the Des Moines Young Alumni Group, which is about 200 folks. Polk County is a key labor market for a lot of our employers, so the ability that our workforce sponsors can join me at these quarterly events and try to highlight working in Story County, I think is, we're very excited. First event is early in October, and then again, we're trying to hit the folks that are visiting Story County through the Sites magazine. All again, trying to drive the brand there we're pushing is WorkinAmes.com. An update on the Economic Development Services side of what our organization does to try to support the other ports of Story County. From April to August, we've actually had a total of 119 different connections with the other communities outside of Ames. I've done 55 different visits. We don't have 55 different communities in Story County, but, and I would say of those 55, the three of you have been involved in a number of those, and I think that continues to be important as we try to provide service and send the message that their growth and their development is important to the county. The number that's fun to watch is the number of project meetings continues to grow, so that's up to 24. I've had the chance to be with you 17 different times here at supervisors' meetings.
Some of them have even been taught.
Yeah. I actually enjoy the opportunity. I think it's great that people have an opportunity to present their opinion, so it's very interesting. So, city council meetings, we've been to 16 of those. In terms of marketing highlights, that's really, our focus is to assist these communities with their marketing efforts. In August, we attended another Community Venture Network meeting. We utilize the funding provided to our organization to actually pay that membership. So, I, you know, I extended an invitation to Story City. They have attended with me both of the times that I've attended. That's information that we're not only looking at for our small communities, but certainly we want to extend that open. I'm hoping when the membership comes available to Nevada, that they understand that they can join with us and attend with us, and that works well. Now, I don't know how to go back, so we'll just have to go forward with that. So, you know, we're working, we're working hard, and we wanna make sure that we're supporting all of our initiatives. We have housing going on in six of the communities, and that's exciting.
You want to talk about LOAS?
We are. LOAS, if you don't know what LOAS is, that's the state's database, so anytime we hear of any property of any size, we put that on there, so it's a part of the state's marketing efforts. And the other side of it is, you can't attract new business and industry without available property zoned appropriately and planned appropriately for business, and so, we've had two communities extend and work through the process to identify and land for future business development. So, everybody thinks that's easy. We've just heard today how hard it is to find property and use it in the right way, and so, we're very excited about the position that two communities have put themselves in to actually continue to grow their business community. So, two, some celebrations I'd like to highlight. Rimrite is a powder coating visit, a business going into Collins. Collins is building a new beautiful fire station, and they said, "Well, we better get our building on the market so we can hopefully have it sold by the time we wanna move into our new facility." We put that on LOAS. We worked with them on some marketing, and in a matter of about six weeks, their building sold, even a little bit before they were ready for it to do so. They came to an agreement with a powder coating company to actually go into their old fire station. So, in October, when we have that event, we will invite you down to celebrate with the community of Collins. We're continuing to work with Zering to implement their facade project. And again, it might be a little chilly when we're out there, but hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be seeing a completed facade project in Zering. And then, while it's not completely related to the services of the AEDC, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your contribution to the Story County Housing Trust Fund. It was approved last week while IFA was in Cedar Rapids. We have our inaugural board meeting for that today, and it'll officially put a number of us into a board capacity for that. We'll then apply for a big chunk of funding for IFA. That's when your local match will come into play, and by the first of the year, we should start being able to support people with rental assistance, with home repairs, and transitional housing. So, stay posted, but that, it's an exciting time for that group as well.
Well, Brenda, you're doing a fantastic job.
Any questions?
Thank you so much. We value our relationship with the Chamber and AEDC and the positive impacts that has on our community, and really, really appreciate the amount of time you spend with our smaller communities and rural areas. Questions for Brenda?
We're all in this together, so...
Good. Thank you.
Good.
Have a great day.
Yes.
Minutes, board, from our September 12th meeting and the 15th school election canvas.
I would move approval of both sets of minutes as presented.
Motion in a second. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Sanders, aye.
Personnel actions as listed, board.
Move approval.
Second.
Chee?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims for September 21st.
Could we please pull claim number 1167?
You have a little ownership, do you?
Well, yeah, I don't get any money from it, but I still own it, so that's claim number 1167, Story County Conservation Board, Tefora Promotions for an ad, and the Ames Bulletin Board, which I legally still own.
Yeah. So, how about if you move approval for every claim except that one?
I will do that. I'd move approval for all claims except claim 1167.
So, noted. And you'll second?
Second then.
Yep. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Let's deal with 1167, Marty. You wanna make a vote? I'll make a motion. I move that we approve claim number 1167, Conservation of Tefora Promotions.
Second.
Sanders, aye. Chee?
Aye.
Olson, the same.
That's good.
Consent agenda, board.
I'd like to pull mine two, which is the agreement with Shive Hattery?
Outstanding. Mike, go ahead and start making your way up here. So, we've got a motion for everything except for item number two.
Correct.
Second to that. Motion in a second. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Amendment to agreement with Shive Hattery for the Tedesco Environmental Marketing Corridor. Mike, tell us about that.
Sure. In brief, we did the RFP for Engineering Services at the beginning of this project. Hired on this engineering firm as a result of that competitive proposal process. We contracted with them at the time for design of, specifically design only of Phase One, because simply there's too many unknowns when we go through a project like this. We can't contract for funding. We don't have et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, they moved forward with that process with design, and now we're entering the contract management phase of it for Phase One, and we're also getting ready to enter into design for Phase Two. So, having said that, this is a proposed amendment to their agreement that covers the contractual management, observation, administration for Phase One services. There's a couple of other things in here that were added on to the work that I asked them to do through the design steps. Couple of things, assistance with some grant applications that we did, a couple of added services for materials that we presented through the design process, those kinds of things are in here as well. So, let's see. We had them help with a couple of grant applications and review a request we had from a neighbor, landowner at the research park, so there are a few of those, what they term as additional design services in there. So, having said that, the Conservation Board did consider this last night and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors.
Does this keep it within budget?
It does stay within budget, correct.
And should we generally view this as Shive Hattery was instrumental in the design work, now we're asking that they help us make sure that what got designed is what actually gets built?
Correct.
Questions?
And the reason I asked before, I explained it to Mike before, there's a comment in the Shive Hattery presentation or the information, and it talks about, "We're going forward on a verbal agreement, and once you go ahead and sign this contract, we'll hand over our work." And I just felt that should be on the record noting that this is fine, okay? That it's just, you know, this is how the process worked as opposed to something different that someone might seek. So, thank you for the explanation and the vote.
And would you consider moving approval?
I would move approval on this as presented.
Second. Olson?
Aye.
Chee?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. That takes care of consent agenda. Thanks, Loris. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
We've handled all our public hearing items. We handled Mr. Youngberg. Now it is time to, for consideration of awarding LOAS bid for Story County HSC generator installation, a bid you thought would never get to you, Cal. Good thing those chairs are comfortable back there.
Please relax.
Oh, we still got more. Oh, yeah. This isn't the end.
Thank you for the hour for this.
This isn't the end.
I got to go over to his office afterwards and work for him for a couple of hours.
All right, so we've spent a lot of time on this, have really appreciated all the design work. We opened bids a week or two ago. And now we're just back to the consideration of awarding the contract to who was the low bidder. Tell us what we need to know.
Cal, I met with the low bidder, HBC, kind of went through their scope of work, discussed their electrical subcontractor. Very comfortable with everything there, comfortable with their scope and with their bid, so we prepared the contract and basically for you to review.
Super. Questions?
None, I think, but I still, as I told Cal this whole time, for all the things that Story County's done, to have this building not have a generator already there kind of surprises me, but the thing is, we're doing it, so we're doing right then.
Okay.
I do have one comment, funding.
Yep. So recognized early on that this was not put into our budget for this year. I think the board recognized that when we made the initial decision that we were going to go through the design of this. So I understood that you're, and write this up, concern about where the money's going to come from. That is the board, board's responsibility. We'll work with Lisa Barkley when she brings forward a budget amendment, recognizing the full, the $245,000, the full cost of this will be reflected in your budget. Yep. Good.
Thanks for trusting us in the meantime.
We put it on the tracks in December in this, now we're here.
That's right.
I would move that we award Harold Pike Construction the contract for the Human Services Center generator installation with Amendment 1, with a price of 245,000. And also, this includes generator installation and includes Amendment Number 1. Period.
All right, good.
It is kind of a clunky, you know, because it's got two considerations there, so is it two? But no, I will second that, Marty.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Anything further? Yes, you feel good about where we are?
Yeah, very good.
Outstanding. Olson.
Aye.
Tiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. You pass this, and excited to work with Pike Construction.
Thank you.
Next, discussion, and we can't get away from you guys, discussion and consideration of awarding Doug Residential Parcel Subdivision. This is just Resolution 1837.
Thank you for your stamina.
I like that you stayed hydrated through the whole meeting.
Okay, I will hit the highlights for you. Let me know if you have any questions as I go along. This is a request for a residential parcel subdivision by Howard and Judy Reischer of Zering. The property is located in Section 13 of Warren Township at 67768 120th Street, Zering. We're located on the very eastern edge of Warren Township, about 1.6 miles northeast of McCallsburg, and 2.25 miles northwest of Zering. It's A1 zoning, it's totally surrounded by A1 zoning. There are five parcels within a half mile that have single-family dwellings. That includes the subject property. There are 23 parcels within a half mile that meet or exceed the 35-acre minimum in the A1 district for a single-family dwelling. Currently, about 31 acres of this property are in row crop production. So just a little bit of history, the original quarter corridor, just this portion here, had a farmstead on it, which was split off in 2002. In 2006, parcel C, which is located right down here, was added to parcel A, which was the remainder of the quarter corridor after the farmstead was divided, to give the property 35 acres to meet our 35-acre minimum requirement for a single-family dwelling in the A1 district. Then in 2007, the house was built in the northwest corner there of the property. There are agricultural buildings on the property that are located just south of parcel B, right here. Okay, so here's the proposed division. We're really just asking to divide off the home from the land. The proposed lot 1 would be 2.72 net acres, and proposed lot 2 would be 34.15. About 12 of these acres are in the flood zone, but we see that there's plenty of space to develop along, along a road, or build a single-family dwelling along a road that's outside of the flood plain. Here's the proposed subdivision again, the existing house, proposed lot 1, and then the remainder would be proposed lot 2. Currently, the, in the immediate future, the plan is to keep this in agricultural row crop. They wanted to be able to sell the property, though, as a buildable lot in the future if someone decides to do that. Site photos, looking northwest from the subject property down 120th Street, looking north, we're up in the turbine area of the county. Looking east along 120th Street toward parcel B, which is the farmstead again, and that's located right here. Looking southeast at the dwelling on proposed lot 1, and then looking south at proposed lot 2, which is primarily in row crop production. Here's looking southwest from proposed lot 1 onto the property directly to the west. Here's looking northwest from proposed lot 2 toward parcel B, which is the farmstead located here. Get a better picture of the agricultural buildings here. Again, those would be on proposed lot 2. This is looking southeast at proposed lot 2 along 680th Street. And then the natural area, this is located on parcel C, but there's a natural area that really extends the length of proposed lot 2, so that is not in row crop production. Residential parcel subdivision regulations, again, residential purposes, no more than two lots being developed, single-family dwellings, no land set apart for new streets, alleys, parks, so on. Let's see. Each lot is one net acre or greater, and each lot has frontage, and then we would not issue any variances from subdivision or zoning standards to complete this subdivision. Comments from the interagency review team? A new drive-by permit would be required from the Story County Engineer, or Secondary Roads Department. The Conservation Department did request a 30-foot easement from the centerline of the stream that runs through the property. This was added to the plat. I guess the major thing on this plat, that we had questions about, was the parcel C, that was that little tail portion of it located to the south, was combined in terms of taxes to the greater piece, I guess. However, the deeds were never combined, so we just asked for that to happen because it needed to be a combined parcel to be buildable. There's flood zone, but again, there's, there's plenty of space on the property to build a single-family dwelling. We sent notice letters to property owners within a quarter mile. We did not receive any comments. So there, in summary, I guess we feel that this fits in the area. Each lot has frontage and meets the minimum net acreage. There is flood zone, but that's sufficient space for a single-family dwelling. And then the plan for proposed lot 2 at this time is to remain in row crop production.
Good. Questions?
None. Good job.
Very straightforward.
So it's our recommendation for approval of Resolution 1837.
Anybody need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I move the consideration of Resolution 1837, awarding Doug Residential Parcel Subdivision as presented.
I would second that.
Motion, a second. Further discussion? Emily, you did a great job today. Tiddy.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1837, passes. Now we're to public forum number two. While we lost all our members of the public, if there were any here, I guess Linda is still a member of the public, if there are any here that wish to address us, they may do so now on this topic. John, you always have the opportunity, but you don't take it as a member of the league. See, you know what, we're going to the microphone, the A's on assignments, Marty.
Be quick. We think we're going to land Crestview here. It's in the process and in motion, so stay tuned. There'll be a lot of traffic moving out of there. Nevada had a very eventful meeting last night on the conjoined projects that are going to be moved between the city and the school. It was their first approach to the community as it was presented, both the council and the school board this past week. I'd like to read something from what I believe would be an institution beyond reproach, and was provided to us today, and I'd like to edify all those with, as we find ourselves in a increasingly urban county. Just like to tell you about where I live. Our livestock production provides 14.62 billion in direct economic output, and livestock processing proceeds provide 17.96 billion in direct economic output. The combined direct economic output of livestock production and processing, 13, or 32.58 billion equates to $10,487 for each of Iowa's 3.107 million people. For the livestock production and processing industry's direct economic output is analogous to an annual sales. That said, workers linked to animal-producing sectors generated 330,000 million in state tax revenues for the state of Iowa in 2015. Those in animal products processing industry account for 140 million in state sales taxes. The total tax contribution from both of these groups is 479 million to the state of Iowa. You can throw shade on them, but they help.
Where's that from? That's-
That was Iowa State. We got that.
Oh, I didn't get that. I only got one handout. I didn't get the other one.
Nope. It was one of those that jumped out at me, because the thing is, the DNR had a little-
So I had that in the pack I left for Deb. If you wouldn't mind, just make a copy for all of us.
Okay. Because this is one of those I got, I had to give back when I went through the tour. They said, "You can't take anything."
Oh, I slipped it in my folder and slipped it out.
They were clear with, "We're going into the areas we went into for the tour, that you're not taking anything in or out."
Oh, anything contaminated.
Yeah, they don't want you to make, put this in contact with anything. They turn around and bring it back out to the public. But I just, this is the world we live in. Folks acknowledge it for what it is and the contributions it provides.
It is and does, and thank you. Loris?
I'll keep it short, too, although mine is a question that's impressive. Just wanted to note that Story County Opioid Task Force met yesterday, and next week, the surveys, YSS and Community and Family Resources are working together, because they've gathered this grant together, and they're going to start surveying our agencies in town, our medical facilities in town, prescribers, and also like our law enforcement, just to figure out what we have available and what we know when it comes to opioid use and treatment. So it'll be very interesting. I assume by the time that's out, Carla Webb will be back, or Deb will be able to do a little presentation for us. Okay, and then I'm done.
Super. Take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I still move.
Second. All the fairies say aye?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Yeah.